Sorry about that. We are having little technical difficulty. So hope you can hear me okay.
Seeing you blinking. And I think Nathan is way. Mine did. Yeah, Dr. Williams, yours worked, didn't it?
Testing.
Test. This one's working. Would you like to take one of these two for that one? Because the end one.
Yeah. Let's see, it works. Well, let's do over. Hi, this is Commissioner Johnson. I will be chairing today's meeting. I now open June 16th Metro Historic Zoning Commission Meeting in order. So first item is approve. Before I go there, I think I have to read up a legal description. So let's start with. Appeal of decision from the Historic Zoning Commission pursuant to the provision of Metro Code 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or a Sackett Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of sursurary. You advise to seek your own independent legal counsel to assure that your appeal is filed in timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the width of sursurary to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. So first thing in item is approval of the minutes of May 29th. Ms. Ziegler, is there any change in the minutes?
There is. We had one request to make a minor change. So a sentence that reads Commissioner Johnson said the photograph was helpful as she had not initially realized. This is, I'm sorry, this is about 1408 Bosco Bell. It read Commissioner Johnson said the photograph was helpful if she had not initially realized that the deck was at the second level and her research on the code showed that there was an acquired 20-foot rear setback. And that's proposed to change to Commissioner Johnson said the photograph was helpful as she had not initially realized that there was an existing deck with a pergola and a second-level deck was in addition to it. And then it'll continue on from there. So if everyone is comfortable with that change, there could be a motion for approval.
Is there any comment or additional comment or change to the minute? Commissioner Price?
Yes, I move for approval.
Commissioner Price made the first move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fitz, seconds. Any other change? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion is, minute is adopted. So next one is we have a request to rehear 1307 Richland Avenue. I think we'd better get a legal description from our legal counselor. Mr. Alex Dickerson.
Yes, thank you. So this one's a little bit unique in the sense that most rehearings you get, this is titled as a rehearing, but it could be considered by the commission as either an original application or rehearing. So I'll kind of give you the options you have. So this property is one that you've heard previously, but it was sold to a family member. So you could consider it as an original application because it's brought by someone, a different owner, and it would be heard at the end of the agenda. That's one option. The second option is you consider it as a rehearing since it's only a transfer. And at that point, you could decide, once you've determined it for a rehearing, whether or not there has been new information that's been submitted. Because that's the standard for a rehearing. Because you can choose to hold a rehearing because there has been new information submitted or you can choose to decline the rehearing because no new information has been submitted. So my suggestion is, and this may involve you all presenting the case, the aspects of the case first so you can make an informed decision, is the first thing you'll do is decide, we choose to hear this as an original application or we choose to hear it as a rehearing and we deny that or we choose to hear it as a rehearing and we accept it. So those are your three options.
And then just to give you a little more background, as you said, this property was sold by the previous owner who came to you, to his son. And your decision in March of this year was to deny economic hardship and require salvage plan and documentation by April 2nd. Your decision included rescinding the permit for an addition. And once the documentation and plans were received, they were to reconstruct the building and then returned to you in order to get that permit for the addition reinstated. And none of those deadlines have been met yet. The documentation for this second request is largely the same as the first application except that there's a new cost for removing the stone and there are new appraisals for both the land and the building. And of course, there's a deed showing that transfer of ownership. So again, the rule is, if you decide this is a request to rehear, the rule is not to rehear a case unless there's information that could not have been available at the time of the previous hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. So first decision we have to make is if we take this case as a new application or if we take this case as a rehearing. Any thought, commissioners? Commissioner Fitz?
I guess I realize while new cost information perhaps has been presented, our ruling was not based on the cost. It was based on hardship being, the owner kind of creating their own hardship. So I'm, I guess I would, I don't know if I'm making the right terminology for the decision, but I would be inclined to not treat it as a new application and to deny a rehearing.
Commissioner Price?
I agree with Commissioner Fitz, and I don't see how ownership change affects our decision or the consideration of whether or not to grant a rehearing either.
Commissioner Mahal?
In that case, I concur with my fellow council people. And I deny the request. I make a motion to deny the request to rehear the case.
So to be clear, so what I am hearing is commissioners treating this case is not the new case, rather case as a rehearing. And a motion is, we don't have motion, but opinion is leaning towards not rehearing. So to make it clear, yes, Mr. Dickerson.
And Madam Chair, you can make that all in one motion if you want. If the commission decides to treat it as a rehearing and deny the rehearing, that can all be in one motion.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. And you had the legal explanation. So is there any motion?
Okay. I move that we, to do what Mr. Dickerson said, to not rehear it and deny the motion to review the case again.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. There's motion and a second. Any further discussion or opinion? Seeing none. Hi, Mr. Commissioner Jones. Thank you for joining. So I will take a call. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? There's no pause. So the rehearing for this case is denied. So now we are moving on to adoption of the agenda. Ms. Ziegler, is there any change to the agenda?
Yes, the applicant for 908 McCarran has requested a deferral.
Okay. So you had the change. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So move. Go ahead.
Motion and second. So agenda is adopted. So now our next thing is a recognition of a council member. I will call on the council member in the appearance. First council member I recognize is Councilmember Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. I'm blinking up here. We think we're good. Okay. When I'm side, we're blinking. This woman, Murphy, isn't the fourth. Thank you for y'all coming to this. And Ms. Mahal, glad we saw you last night and reconnected you. Some of y'all may know that I'm usually on y'all's side because I'm the desk because I'm the director of the plan and zone historic commission. So I know extra work goes into all this today here. Maybe that I'm rarely here because neighborhoods are in district usually very active and outspoken when they make or do things. So usually I let them carry the heavy wear on it because we have so much else in our district. Think these cases we had for you to need some extra attention. So I came here to share some more perspective. So first, let me thank for 3707 Richland Avenue. And we had Jim Lee, who just left, is our great leader at Richland West End. So we appreciate all decline rehearing. We did not agree with what you just put it on. Appreciate that. The other case that I'm here for is 4122 Average Road. I'm glad that has come to sort of solution. I know that it's been going on for a long time and that I've been talking with the property owner who is here as well. And I'll let them speak more specifically in case I'm glad y'all can come to some sort of conclusion that not need to continue to drag on and on. And I'm here for, I'm sorry, so that would, item E is the first that y'all just said. Item N is that I am in support of my constituent plans. And then I'm also here on item P 322 Harvard Avenue. I'm not supportive of the recommendation. I'm supportive of allowing the roof re-change. I know that they have representation here, Mr. Pond. And I just wanted to lend my support that this is a project I think should be approved. There have been similar projects approved in the immediate surrounding area as well as within overlay boundaries. Two doors down, I'm sure Mr. Pond will get into, is a home that was approved as a very large two-story home. And this is a home that basically will continue to look the same from the street, even though they are seeking a ridge raise. I've been in the property. The attic and the access to the attic, which they are looking to raise the roof on, it's really not accessible in a safe manner currently and cannot be made accessible in a safe manner without this re-phrase. Literally, I walked up sidestep to get up to the attic. They have a very young puppy that followed us up shortly thereafter that we had to carry back down for fear of injuring itself. And I too was worried about injuring myself coming back down. But even when standing up inside the attic that had previously been converted somewhat, I'm 5'2" and I could barely stand up there or make it work if I had to live up there. And so I think this is a very reasonable accommodation that they are requesting. I think it will allow for young families to stay in Richland West End, that are young families that are growing instead of moving out of the neighborhood, which we need young families in all of our neighborhoods, of course, but especially in a neighborhood that is so historic and has long transit lines and things like that. So I wanted to just really express my full support of their request, and I hope that you will find that and rule in their favor. And so I just wanted to thank you all again. And I will note that we actually have had a lot of discussions recently about historic West End, the neighborhoods that surround there. We have a BZA case about it tomorrow. And I think.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. Appreciate it. Our next council member, I recognize Councilmember Withers. Thank you. Councilmember Cash.
I know it's a little awkward, but I'm getting a message. That one's not working very well.
Thank you. And normally I would like to wait until my items are up, but I want to speak about one item on here and kind of in a bigger picture. You're looking at a house in BHN, a historic home in BHN was demolished. And it was not permitted to be demolished. This is the second house in BHN that has been demolished since I've taken counsel two years ago. And so I'm concerned. Staff is great about a quick response and getting an inspector out there and coming to a solution. And I support the recommendations, the staff recommendations for 1712 Linden. But I'm concerned about the bigger picture too in that the two houses in BHN have been demolished. I had one in Hillsborough West End that the second floor was pretty much demolished. And there's good guidance on getting it back to the way it was before. But, and you know, I know sometimes miscommunication can happen. And I haven't heard exactly why this house in 1712 was demolished, what the error was. But you know, to the folks in my neighborhood who value these historic guidelines and understanding what's going on, this is more than an oops to them. Like this is serious that something has been taken from their community. So I'm hopeful that it can be put back the way it was as much as possible. However, I am happy to work with staff, with Metro Legal to see if we can do something to keep this from happening as much as it is. And I also would like to point out that, as you may or may not, as you may know, in council, we're looking at legislation to rethink notifications. And that discussion is ongoing. And I believe next month we'll be looking at that legislation again and seeing if we want to tweak it. But to me, this is a reason why we need a little bit better notification, especially to the folks that are right by the properties. I mean, there's a good system for letting, we council people always get a list of what's coming up on the agenda pretty quickly. And then we, you know, we know, and the Neighborhood Association representatives know when to look at the staff reports, which are very helpful. But it's hard for neighborhood associations and myself to always know who the exact people are that are close to that property. And maybe some of this could be avoided if folks next door or across the street like knew what was allowed with that property. And you know, they might even be able to stop it faster. So I did want to take this time to kind of talk about it, not only about 1712 Linden, but about the bigger picture of like the folks in my neighborhood worked hard to get these conservation overlays. And it breaks their heart when they see these houses coming down, and we got to stop it. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing real quick. There's another item on the agenda, at the end of the agenda, 2415 Oakland Avenue. And I think my understanding, it's been brought to my attention that there's kind of an issue with an easement. Now, I know that you all don't make rulings on easements. That's not your purview or within your authority. But I do hope that any legal issues with this are worked out before a permit is, a plan is approved and a permit is granted. I've seen some, I've seen from a neighbor the issues that he has with it and the documentation that he has. I haven't heard from the applicant, but I want to hear so. But I do want this, I do hope that this is worked out, like the legal issues are worked out before any permit is granted to do any work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. I believe that. Oh, Congresswoman. Can you hear me? It's my anger. My acting. Let's continue on. Next item is consent agenda. Items on consent agenda will be voted on at two times. No division public will be held, no out commission debate is items unless member public or the commission request that the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Items from the consent agenda will be hard at the end of agenda. So. Besides, please proceed for the consent items.
All right. The first item on consent agenda is for an addition and outbuilding at 2804 Oakland Avenue. The very first item was the approval of the administrative permits that were issued for the previous month, followed by 2804 Oakland Avenue. And then an addition at 1704 Shelby Avenue. An addition and outbuilding at 905 North 12th Street. Construction of an addition with a setback determination at 2618 Barton Avenue. And finally, for an outbuilding, detached accessory dwelling unit at 1811 Beachwood Avenue. And this was a revision to a previously approved plan. Staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with applicable conditions that are, that are laid out in the staff recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have the consent agenda items? Is there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? Commissioner Fitz?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll just motion a second.
Any other discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Chairman, I think that we're all going to have to just really, really project. The mics are working fairly decently in the room, but they're not working for the recording. So I think, I apologize to the applicants, staff, all of you, but everything we've tried so far has not worked. So maybe just all need to stop really loud.
You had the administrator, Ms. Ziegler. So what's the reason? Mike is acting up. So it happens when we meet as a first time in person. So please be patient. I really appreciate it. So if you hear Mike clicking, kind of try to push again to make it sure it's red. So when it's red, you'll be hard. And if you're speaking, make sure push so the member will hear very clearly.
If I could, I'd also like to just take a minute to recognize a new staff member who's presenting next, Joseph Rose. He's come to us from New York and just started this week, and we're already putting it to work. So he'll present Jenny Warren's case.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. Welcome, Mr. Rose. And we are very excited to have you as a staff member. So please proceed to present your first case.
It's great to be here, guys. I'm excited to join the team and be a part of the thing that's going here. Okay. Case is 95 South Douglas Avenue. In 2018, the commission approved an SP site at 945 South Douglas. 19 houses are planned for the development. The commission approved a specific region, E, heights, widths for each unit and recommend approval to the planning commission. The SP was approved. The applicant has returned to this commission for final design approval of each unit. The commission has already approved units 1 through 5. Today's application is for unit number 6. The height and width meet what was approved for the SP. The main roof form presented for this unit, a single gable with a facing gable and gabled dormers. This is an appropriate historic form. However, staff finds the steep 1812 pitch of front-facing gables and dormers along the Victorian Gothic detailing creates a Gothic style not seen elsewhere in Waverly Belmont. The guidelines specify that residential roof pitches of the main form of building are between 612 and 1212. The commission did approve a 2012 scope for a two-door style house for unit number 4, but two-door style homes are more common in this neighborhood while this type of Gothic detailing is not. Staff is concerned that the overall development could end up as a collection of different historic styles, not all of which actually found in the neighborhood. Part 2 of the design guidelines encourages new construction inspired by historic styles and discourages replicas. The Secretary of Interior Standards, on which the design guidelines are based and that are included in Section 1D states "The new construction should be of its own time and not create a false sense of historical development." With the condition that the front-facing gable and dormers are reduced in pitch to not exceed 1212, staff find that the proposal is appropriate in terms of height, massing, materials, and roof form. It is consistent with the site plan approved for the SP, and there are no further design issues. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. One, the pitch of the front-facing gable and dormers will be reduced to 1212 or less. Staff shall review and approve the porch roofing, front steps, doors, garage doors, and walkway material prior to purchase installation. And the HVAC shall be located on the rear facade or on a side facade beyond the midpoint of the house. And utility meters shall be located on the side of the building within five feet of the front corner. within five feet of the front corner.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Again, we are having some technical difficulty throughout the microphone. And if you hear or see the red disappear while you're speaking, please be sure to push again so everybody can hear through the microphone. And thank you. Is the applicant here to represent the case? Yes. Please try that mic.
Okay. Is that working all right?
Yes, thank you.
And is there, for the slides, can I?
You have 10 minutes, and you may reserve 2 minutes for rebuttal.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Martin Wick. I'm at 912 Bailey Street. I'm the architect for the project. This discussion is actually kind of similar to the discussion that we had when we presented Unit 1 for this project, for the site. We weren't in person at that point, so I'm not sure who all was there because I couldn't see everybody's faces. But if you were there, the staff recommendation was fairly similar, commenting that the tower that we had on Unit 1 was not necessarily appropriate to the context of Waverly Belmont. And in our discussion with the commission, it was determined that because this site is so large and so many units are being developed, there was some leeway for sort of additional context to be taken into account on this project. And so with that in mind, we are presenting Unit 6 kind of in the same line because we feel that there is, you know, we've been asked to present or to create a good amount of variety on this site. And so we have, we're kind of exploring different architectural styles. It's still sort of Victorian in detailing, but it does move sort of more into that more Gothic style. So anyway, it's a similar situation, Unit 1, and I wanted to bring it before the commission to see what your thoughts on the detailing were as well. Also, just wanted to bring up, you know, they mentioned that this neighborhood typically has 612 to 1212 slopes, but also immediately noted that the two doors down was approved with 20 to 12. So if it is appropriate to the style, a steeper slope can be approved within the guidelines. And then the note about the replicas was a little, it didn't necessarily seem relevant here. It's kind of a, it feels very contradictory to what the guidelines in general tell us to do as designers designing infill in historic neighborhoods. We're supposed to draw from the context, from the styles around us. And so if you're telling us that we can't replicate a different style, but then we need to replicate a similar style nearby, it's just, it's hard to find the happy medium sometimes as a designer. And so, you know, we want to bring some variety to the site. We feel that this, this style is not so far removed from what's around it. And just kind of wanted to see what your opinion on that is. And I also wanted to know that while, you know, the other part of that comment is that they don't want, or the guidelines don't want, like, designs to feel, what was it? I can't remember the exact wording. To feel like they're just drawing on different styles and kind of placing them side by side, and that they want it to feel like this. This is part of the time period that it's built in. And, you know, regardless of the style, when you're driving down the street, because we're using things like split-face CMU and cement board siding, you know, metal-clad windows, those things are what tend to set a house apart in a historic neighborhood. Even if you're using a similar style, you can tell side by side when something is new construction versus a historic house. And I think when you drive down the street, you can kind of see, 937 Douglas is a very small historic Victorian house. I think you will be able to very clearly see the difference between that and the houses that we're designing, even though we're using historic styles for our development. And that's, that's all I need to say. So thank you. And I can answer any questions if you have any too.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. We will call upon you if we have any question.
Thanks.
Is there any public who would like to comment on this case? Seeing none, we will move on to deliberation or question. Commissioners?
This is a question for staff. Am I right that the main sort of objection to the style is that there are no other Gothic Revival houses in the neighborhood? It's not, it's not a commonly found or found at all? Is that right?
That's part of it. And then, as he said, there's already been approval of a turrett, which is also not found in this neighborhood. So the concern was that although they're definitely meeting that requirement of diversity of looks and styles, that we're starting to create this sort of false historic development.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comment, commissioners? If there is no question, I can entertain the motion. Commissioner Fitz?
I'll make a comment. While I appreciate the applicant's kind of reasoning behind the design, I'm inclined to agree with all of the staff conditions and recommendations on this and just would like to hear from other commissioners.
I agree with Commissioner Fitz. I understand the sort of aversion on the staff's part for not wanting to create a hodgepodge of historic styles in this SP, especially when we've already granted some concessions around the edges with previous cases. I don't want, I don't want that to snowball necessarily in this or in any future SPs that are going to involve multiple designs in a historic neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Mahal.
That being said, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendations for 945 South Douglas Avenue, unit number 6.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahal. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion, comment? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. So next agenda item is violation alterations 1112 Bosco Bell. Mr. Sargent, please present.
Yes, the house at 1112 Bosco Bell Street is a circa 1900 folk Victorian house that contributes to the historic character of the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The porch was enclosed sometime between 1957 and 1968. In the 1914 and 1957 sandborne maps, the porch is shown as open, but this 1968 photo shows the porch enclosed. Metro records do not indicate any subsequent permitted additions or alterations to the house. In September 2020, the commission approved an addition and outbuilding for the site. Work on the house was in progress on March 25, 2021, when a windstorm facilitated the collapse of the historic house. However, all the siding, windows, and doors had been removed, which made the house more susceptible to full demolition under the conditions of the windstorm. No other nearby homes were severely damaged. Therefore, staff concludes that the applicant created their hardship by not securing the building during rehabilitation. At the time the addition was permitted, removal of siding was not reviewed in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. However, under the updated guidelines, removal and replacement of siding is reviewed with the hope that unintentional demolitions such as this one can be prevented. The photo on the left is the house after the March 25 storm, and the photo on the right was taken earlier this month on June 8. On April 20, 2021, staff issued a permit to reconstruct the house and the previously approved addition. However, no work has begun on the site, including no clearing of the site. Property Standards has begun a violation case since the site has not been cleared, and it may be considered a breeding ground for nuisances to the neighborhood. For demolition, the house at, so staff wants to look at this for your consideration for three votes. The first, for demolition, the house at 1112 Bosco Bell Street was a historic house that contributed to the historic character of the neighborhood. And for that reason, staff finds that its demolition does not meet Section 3B to B of the design guidelines for appropriate demolition. Because homes around this one were not damaged in the storm, staff finds that the applicant created the hardship by not securing the building. So for the second consideration, the show cause, since no work has commenced on the site since the collapse of the building, staff recommends that the preservation permit for the addition for the DADU and for the reconstruction with the previously approved addition be rescinded, finding that demolition took place outside of the scope of the permit and work on the construction has not yet begun, reconstruction has not yet begun. And for the third component, reconstruction, if the commission finds the demolition to be inappropriate, then the violation still exists and does need to be addressed. So staff would recommend that the building be fully documented and reconstructing, reconstructed using historic images and measurements from previous plans. Section 2H of the design guidelines allows for the reconstruction if the building was contributing, if it had an appropriate massing and scale for the neighborhood, and the reconstruction is based on documentary evidence. The building was contributing and was an appropriate massing and scale for the district. And evidence of earlier conditions includes photographs, sandborne maps, and parts of previously approved plans that were to scale. So staff recommends the following conditions. For the reconstruction, they shall follow the historic documentation. By the lap siding shall have mitered corners as it did originally. And staff would also recommend that the previously enclosed porch should be unenclosed, even though it had previously been enclosed. Staff recommends that the following information and actions be submitted and taken within 15 days of the commission's decision. That scaled plans of the historic house, not including the addition that was previously permitted, be submitted. Staff further recommends that no additional preservation permits be issued until the reconstruction has been completed, inspected, and reviewed by the commission as to whether or not it is a true reconstruction of the historic building.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Yeah, please come forward. Present your case.
The applicant had a death in the family. He couldn't be here, but I'm a contractor on the property. So I'm here just to kind of explain and give you a gist of what happened. Once we took the lap siding, originally, my name is Corey Allen with Allen Construction. We took the siding off the house. And initially, the lumberyard told us it would be three to five days to get the new zip board, which is required now for new construction. And between that time, he gave me a three to five day leeway. But with lumber prices and things that they are, it actually took them almost two weeks to get us, well, it would have took them two weeks to get us what we needed. And during that time, that's when the tornado came and windstorms had blew the house down. So it was never intended on being elapsed of two weeks. You know, he initially gave us a three to five day leeway. But with things going on now, it took two weeks. And as far as the cleanup and everything that happened, we're dealing with, we've been dealing with the insurance company almost two months, trying to get them to, to, you know, to come out and understand, like, what we have going on and what we're trying to do. And the rich number they gave us wasn't sufficient. And we went back and actually, they should have everything resolved by the end of this week. So from my understanding, it was never, you know, elapsed in where we were going to do work, when we were going to start work because everything was fully funded and ready. But once the house was blown down, we were actually at a standstill until the insurance situation got resolved.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is it okay to ask questions now of the applicant?
Sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
With what the staff recommends, do you have any issues with any of the provisions that the staff has laid out as far as this property is concerned?
The only thing that we were concerned with is the rescinding of the permits because of how long things take. I mean, once this, the insurance issue gets resolved, we're ready to commence on start building the project like it was. We just don't want the permits to be rescinded and have to start the process all over again.
Okay.
So just as a quick follow-up, then the owner's intention, and I remember reading about this in the newspaper. I'm very sorry for your, who you're representing. I mean, it's a bad case of circumstances. And I understand it's not their fault necessarily. At the time, the removal of siding was not covered by our purview, and now it is. So it's complicated. But as far as you understand, then, their intention is to rebuild the house as it was?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We want to build it back exactly like it was. I mean, we already have the dimensions, you know, the scale, the plan, and everything.
Sure.
So the house is going back like, exactly like it was. We just don't want the permits to be rescinded. So we have to start everything all the way back over again.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Is any other commissioner have a question to the applicant's representative? As a chair, I do have one follow-up question to the applicant. The chair privilege for question.
All right, no problem.
So when you, the permit was to the addition to the rear, and then you started removing the siding. I'm just trying to understand, is this your regular practice to remove the siding before you start the construction of the addition? Or is there any reasoning to start with removing the siding at that time?
No, initially the reason we're in the siding because it was just in such bad shape. Really couldn't have the back of the house addition and the front portion lineup identical. So with us, you know, taking that siding off and then putting the new zip board around the whole property, it would be one almost consistent. Looking home, and it would have gave, gave them a lot better product than trying to do something with the old siding, putting, you know, board on top of it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, any other questions? Is there any public who would like to comment? Councilmember Withers?
Thank you, Chair and commissioners, for your consideration. I definitely feel bad for the homeowner and the applicant and the contractor on this. And I definitely am glad that the commission saw fit to adopt the updated design guidelines that has more review over removal of siding. Sometimes it is necessary, but that, we do see that happen, that removal of siding leads to building collapses. And this is kind of a prime example of that, even when there's not a significant storm. But having said that, I don't have an objection to the staff report. I think that it captures a lot of things well. There was a lot of damage in East Nashville at that time, and some windows broken out and some things like that. But not, there was not a lot of significant damage even on that area of Bosco Bell there. So I think that the self-induced nature of the risk of collapse is accurate. But we also kind of need to move forward. And really, from the neighbor's perspective there on Bosco Bell, the main concern is that, you know, a couple of months have gone by and you do still have the roofing materials there. And really, they just, I think, want to move forward however expediently we can get that done. But just to get those materials up off the ground as quickly as we can into landfills or containers, just, I would just ask the commission, I think the conditions are fine, but just not to add any further delay to, or unnecessary delay to the applicant, both in cleanup and in construction. I mean, it's just, if the original permits were to rebuild the house with an addition, and even with a day due, I don't necessarily know what the value is of delaying that further as long as they do reconstruct to that original permit. So that's what I would offer. Just really want to work with the neighbors to get stuff cleaned up and hopefully work with the applicant to get something built back that's appropriate as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Withers. Is there any other public would like to comment? I close, public hearing to be closed. Commissioners, question deliberation. Commissioner Fitz?
I have a question for staff and maybe legal.
I have a question for staff and maybe legal. Since, I mean, I'm encouraged that the, the owner wants to rebuild as, rebuild the house as it was. Since the scope of work is different, are we able, are we able to move forward without rescinding the preservation permit? Like, I know we're trying, we're trying to move forward and do this in a, in a expeditious manner, so is there legally, can we do that, or do we have to rescind the preservation permit?
I think it depends on if there's a change in what was requested. If, if they could still accomplish the original permit, if they built it back, I wouldn't think you would have to rescind it.
And to add on that, I don't think they're requesting to change anything from what was previously approved. It is part of the staff recommendation that the addition, the permit for the addition be rescinded and the house be reconstructed. But there again, that's, that's up to you if you want to rescind that or not.
And then I guess, I guess we would need some sort of submittal and documentation of, of what's being reconstructed, because we don't, we didn't previously have that because it existed.
They do include, correct me if I'm wrong, they do include the existing house in the drawings that were presented for the addition. So we do have that. I'll just say that my only concern is that you have required it of other like projects, or maybe this isn't a like project, and you can explain in your motion why it's, it's different. You know, just so we're being consistent, if that makes sense. And I know that there's concern about it being cleaned up as quickly as possible, and rescinding the permit wouldn't have anything to do with that. They could still clean up and get started with reconstructing. And again, with those others, what has been required is reconstruction of the actual historic house, then they come back to you, prove that they've done that appropriately, and then ask for the addition at that time.
I understand what, what Robin just said. When we've, other similar, or so-called similar cases were done intentionally, a lot of time, but intentionally demolishing, knowing that it was not allowed or permitted, I see a difference in this case with the natural causes and accidental nature of it and just the whole set of circumstances. So I think I'm inclined to approve the staff recommendation without the reconstruction sidebar number two about the rescinding preservation permits, but I'm open to hearing other opinions too.
Commissioner Mahal?
I have, I have a question. So originally, we approved the addition and the DADU, right? And so now we're dealing with the historic house. If the DADU and the addition were not part of this, would they have to come before us to reconstruct the historic house? And if we do not require a permit, what prevents them from, what, what controls do we have to make sure the house is reconstructed appropriately?
So there's multiple questions there, so stop me if I don't hit on all of them. So first of all, assuming that your decision matches the staff report, all right, so then they would receive a permit for new construction of the house, to reconstruct the house, not the addition and the DADU. Then they'd come back to you and say, here, we've done that, we got our permit, we did it, we've reconstructed the house, here's all the pictures, here's how it looks. And then you say, yes, you've met that requirement, so now we are happy to look at the addition and the outbuilding again, if you would like. And I don't think I got all your questions.
No, you did. It, it just seems to me that we would require a preservation permit for the reconstruction of the house, and if we don't rescind the preservation permits, they can just build the house however they want to, without any preservation...
That's part of the concern, yes.
Yeah. That concerns me, yes.
But under reconstruction, it says, number one, that the plans for reconstruction of the house have to be in its original state. So why would there not be a control for that? And also, just from a building perspective, it's more efficient to do it all at once, framing, roofing, everything, than to do it one time and then who knows who the next crew is and how they tie it in, and just logistically, that, I don't know that it makes a lot of sense to do it that way. If, if the permit is, if our decision and the permit is written in such a way that it must be reconstructed based with, on original plans and materials, et cetera.
Okay.
So if I may, Robin, I think the concern is, I'm hearing commissioners are leaning towards allowing the construction, reconstruction of the historic house as, as well as addition at the same time. So I think that's what I'm hearing. So accomplish that, maybe we have to rescind existing permit, but would it be possible to require rebuilding historic house with extension at the same time? I think that's the question, technical question. So it can be rebuilt with original house, but at the same time, further delay, we can allow the applicant to construct the addition at the same time. Can we issue such permit?
Yes, you can make your motion be whatever you want it to be.
Thank you. I think now it's clear, you know, what you can accomplish by motion. Is there any other question or discussion? If not, I'm happy to take a motion.
With respect to, I'm sorry, I forgot the address here. 1112 Boscoval Street, I move that we approve the staff request with the exception of, I apologize if I'm not going to get this correctly, with the exception of pulling their existing preservation permit to, in order to allow the applicant to build, rebuild the historic house as stipulated by staff with, at the same time as building the previously approved DADU and addition. Is that right?
Is that clear, Robin?
I think so, and this is just a technicality, but I wanted to ask if that included a disapproval of demolition. And I know that seems ridiculous because the house is gone, but that's part of, it didn't meet the requirements for demolition, so it's part of requiring that it be reconstructed. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So should we take that fast motion separately, or should we take together?
Let me try to read this and see if this is what you're saying, so give me just a second if you would too. Move to disapprove demolition, finding that demo does not meet Section 3B to B, and reconstruct the previously approved house with a previously approved addition. Finding that the reconstruction and new construction meets Section 2H. And I think that's, I think that's the, all of the prior recommendation, but without the rescinding of the addition.
Yes, that sounds right to me.
So you had the motion, I stand second.
I stand again.
Thank you. Any question, discussion? Seeing none, or in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next case, Ms. Sargent.
All right. The next case is for 1710 Linden Avenue. The house at 1710 Linden Avenue was constructed circa 1920 and contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. On December 16th, 2020, the commission approved the request for an addition that included a setback determination on this property, and the preservation permit was issued the following day. On May 20th, 2021, a neighbor contacted MHCC staff concerned about the level of demolition. Staff confirmed that all of the house had been demolished except for the front wall and porch, and a stop work order was issued as the work exceeded the scope of all issued permits. The house at 1710 Linden Avenue contributed to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. And for that reason, staff recommends disapproval of demolition, finding that it does not meet Section 3B. No information was submitted by the applicant detailing reasons for the demolition. All preservation permits do include the following sentence: "Any substitutions or deviations from the approved work require further review and approval by MHCC prior to work being undertaken. If staff had been notified that there may have been portions of the building that could be saved, and there could have been materials salvaged. Since the demolition was accomplished outside the scope of the, of the work for the permit, and a revision of the permit was not requested, staff recommends that the permit for the addition be rescinded." Sorry, a little stuffy. If demolition is found to be inappropriate, then the violation exists, and staff would recommend that the building be fully documented and reconstructed using original materials if possible and historic images. Documentation should not include the addition if the commission rescinds the previous permit for the addition. Section 2A4 of the Design Guidelines allows for reconstruction if the building was contributing, had appropriate massing and scale for the neighborhood, and is based on documentary evidence. And staff finds that reconstruction, in this case, can, can meet all three of those criteria. With this, staff recommends consideration of three votes, as we did previously. For the demolition, staff recommends disapproval, finding that demolition does not meet Section 3B. For the show cause, staff recommends that the previous preservation permit for the addition be rescinded, finding that demolition took place outside the scope of the permit. Sorry. And for the reconstruction, staff recommends that the building be fully documented and reconstruction use original materials and historic images, following the detailed direction of this, of the report, with these conditions. Number one, plan for removal, storage, and reuse of salvage materials be submitted within 15 days of the commission's decision. Number two, dimensions of all features be submitted within 15 days. Three, plans for reconstruction of the house with details on its features and the results of the previous two conditions be submitted prior to the issuance of, of demolition and new construction permits. And plans shall not include the addition permitted previously if that permit is rescinded. And four, no additional preservation permits be issued until the reconstruction has been inspected and reviewed by the commission as to whether or not it's a true reconstruction of the historic building. So staff finds that the reconstruction meets the guidelines, or can meet the guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Is applicant present?
Yes, ma'am.
Please come forward.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is CJ Sabia. I'm the owner of Sabia Construction LLC. We are the general contractor for this property, and I appreciate your time today. I prepared a statement that I've been thinking about for the past month after I received notification about what we had to do today, and I'd like to read that if that's okay. I'd always anticipated the first time that I would stand before this commission, it would actually be to receive a preservation award, not for something like this. I've been in construction, residential construction since 2003. I'm native Nashvilleian, not that that matters, but I've been here doing this since 2003. I started Sabia Construction in 2016, 41 now. And since 2016, we've actually done six projects in historical overlays in Nashville. Some of, some of them you guys have probably seen before, and we've actually been nominated twice for historical preservation awards, and hopefully we'll win one in the near future. And maybe we can turn this one around and win one. We made some great contributions to Belmont Hillsborough in that time. We haven't met before, but be happy to talk with you afterward, sir. We've made some great contributions to the neighborhood, and we've had neighbors and industry professionals alike comment on how appreciative they are for the work that we've done, and taking the right steps, following the guidelines, and actually executing plans to where these houses do look original. That's our goal. Personally, not that this is super relevant, but I'm a preservationist at heart, I'm, I'm an architectural enthusiast, I collect first pressing vinyl albums, I collect vintage baseball cards, I love old houses, I get giddy about old houses. And when I drove up to this house, our framers had just started doing some structural demo in order to start framing the house and reframing the addition. Unfortunately, they took it way too far. And by the time I showed up, I'm surprised I didn't have a heart attack when I pulled up to the job site. I called a timeout, and that's what the house looked like. And I was, I was horrified. You know, we've, we've always respected the design guidelines of the overlays, as well as we've always been an advocate for the Metro Historical Zoning Commission and the overlays that you guys enforce, and the guidelines that you enforce. We've always been an advocate, I'm on the Historical Nashville Incorporated group, and personally, I think that we need more overlays in place in Nashville. So I'm, I'm not the person that you would expect something like this to happen. I personally think we need more overlays. I also think we should not allow hardy siding in any of the overlays. No fiber cement should be all wood, we shouldn't allow split-faced block. I, I could be the architectural historical snob if you want me to be, and I already am. This is a mistake. So that being said, what happened at 17 Linden is not how we normally operate at all, not even close. It's disappointing, frustrating, and embarrassing that my team is responsible for such a mistake. This is not who we are. And that's what happened. It's a mistake, is an absolute mistake. My team gave full and proper instruction to our, to our carpenter that were within the Metro Historical Zoning Commission guidelines as far as what we're like able to demo per our permit, and unfortunately, in a very short window of time, because they saw some structural issues with that, that's neither here nor there for this conversation, but that's why they ended up doing that. It was problematic. They, they cut it out, threw it away, and that's what we were left with. So when I arrived on site, that's what I found. My team and I would like to apologize for what has happened. This kind of mistake will never happen again, I guarantee you that. And so where do we go from here? Fortunately, I, you know, the projects that we do in these neighborhoods, we work with Allard Ward Architects pretty much on every one. And, you know, they're the ones that have helped coach me, as well as some of the staffers here have coached me on the guidelines and what to do and what not to do, especially in the first couple that I did. I was scared to death to do anything wrong and get in trouble. And so I've, I've learned by getting into the details and reading the rules. The, you know, so where do we go from here? We have, we have, we have an excellent as-built set of plans that was not part of our permit set. However, it's no different than what the front elevations and side elevations of our permit set actually shows, it's exactly the same thing. You know, I move for us to be able to, please, I beg that we are able to move forward without rescinding the permit for the addition, and that we can consolidate the addition and reconstruction of the front of the house exactly how it was, you know, cross every T, dot every I, that we could do both simultaneously. Because, you know, the previous, the previous property that we just, you know, listened to, I think that ours is similar in nature in that we do not want a project like this carrying on for an additional four to six months for the sake of the neighbors. You know, based on cost of lumber right now, there's no way that I would want to demo this much of the house, even if it was permitted. So considering it's twice as much as it is now, and I think that it would be, it would be cost prohibitive to, to rebuild the house, apply for a permit, and then, and then do the addition. To me, it makes sense to do it all at once, even if there are a very tight system of checks and balances along the way, happy to do whatever we need to do. And so I ask for your forgiveness, and I also ask for your permission to proceed with rebuilding this house exactly as it was supposed to be originally, which is exactly how it was on the front. And, and there's no better person to do it than us. So if you all have any questions, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does commissioner have any question to the applicant? Commissioner Mahal? Commissioner Meho.
So it's the subcontractor that you used that did this to the house. Have you worked with the subcontractor before?
I have not, but my project manager has. So, and that subcontractor, that carpenter, has actually worked in historical overlays before, and so they knew better, but I think that they might have had a different team lead on this. Actually, this is the second project we've worked with them on, so we did a little work on another project with them, but nothing too crazy. So, yes, it was, unfortunately, it was them that took it upon themselves to go that far.
Is that this S&amp;S Services? Who are they? I went by the house today, and I saw this S&amp;S Services sign on the, is that the subcontractor?
No, ma'am. That was probably SLS Services. They're a grading contractor. They do erosion control and grading for us. That's probably what that was. If you saw their sign on some steel fence, that's probably what that was. Yes, ma'am. No, this is a carpenter that actually works for a very reputable framing company here in town, and they, yeah, so they took it too far without our permission. And if I could, yeah, if I could rewind time, go back in time, I'd do it.
Any other question to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
And if you guys ever want any help with any policy on, you know, we're talking about checks and balances and policies for historical, I'm happy to contribute and be part of that conversation. Just let me know.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there any comment from public? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, discussions?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is to our legal counsel. So if we rescind the permit, does that mean they have to reapply and pay an additional fee for a permit? I'm kind of with the counselman over cash over here, but, you know, there needs to be some stronger penalties or fines for people who tear down historic buildings in historic neighborhoods. And I think maybe the reason why they don't want the permit rescinded is they may have to pay another permit fee. Is that, do you see that?
My understanding is there won't be another permit fee, but they would be subject to whatever changes in guidelines have happened since then. If there have been any changes to the guidelines, they would be subject to the new guidelines for the new permit.
Just to clarify, we don't have a fee for our permits. We don't have a fee for our permits. There's no application fee.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, so while I do commiserate with the situation, working at a general contractor, I understand, you know, sometimes things happen, but then on the other side, there are consequences to things happening when you are the general contractor over a job. Dissimilar to the previous case, which work was done, the guidelines have been updated to allow purview over the removal of siding, but work was done as it should have as permitted, and then there was a natural event that happened that was unfortunate. This case, my mistake was made, communication errors occurred, and I just hesitate to allow the addition permit to be, to hold, to stand, because then that puts us in a position of becoming judge and jury of who's telling the truth over what happens on their sites. And that is what, you know, I just want everyone to understand that's what we're up against here, is who's, we come up against these every case, not this particular case, but of who's telling us the truth and what happened. And I just don't think that's a place that we want to tread into. So for that reason, I am inclined to support all of staff's recommendations, building the house back exactly as it was without the addition of the permit that ends in '07 here. So that's just my comments on that. If anyone else has thoughts, it is unfortunate, and saying whether I believe the applicant or not of what happened, but then just allowing them to build what they wanted immediately after demolishing the home, a mistake or not, I think sets a precedent for others in the neighborhood to possibly be bad actors, even if this one was not.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other comment?
I agree with Commissioner Jones. I know in the past, when we've had similar cases many times, and have not been very lenient with contractors and builders that, when mistakes are made due to communication failures. So I also agree with staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Price.
Yeah, I agree with everything Commissioner Jones said. This is very similar to a case we heard around the corner on Dallas, I believe. And these are the same recommendations were upheld.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I appreciate the contractor coming in and explaining what happened. I can understand, I can understand where you were coming from, but I'm inclined to support everything that Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Price has said. Since like there has to be a line that's drawn where, you know, people are accountable for the mistakes that are made.
Thank you for the comment. So commissioners, now I will entertain the motion. Commissioner Jones?
Sure. It says three votes. Do you want three votes or one motion, one vote, with it all included?
If you're comfortable making it all.
Okay. TBD. Regarding 1710 Linden Avenue, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendations on three issues. One, disapproval of demolition, finding that demolition does not meet Section 3B. Two, the preservation permit, number 2020074352, for an addition, be rescinded, finding that demolition took place outside of the scope of the permit. And three, reconstruction, that the building be fully documented and reconstructed using original materials and historic images, following the detailed direction of this report, and with the guidelines in place in the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Just one thing. I want to tell the contractor that I appreciate his work with the historic preservation community. I'm really sorry that this happened to you, and I hope you can understand that if we let these things go through, the next person's going to say the same story. I think Commissioner Johnson Jones put it in a nice manner that, you know, we're not here to say yea or nay. So I just appreciate your service to the community, and I'm awfully sorry that this happened. I just...
Thank you, Commissioner Meho. Nicely said. I think it's, you know, it's all of our sentiment. Appreciate that. So motion was made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item will be presented by, again, Ms. Sargeant.
All right. The house at 1906 Beechwood Avenue is circa 1938 and contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. On February 12, 2021, staff observed that the front porch had been altered and an outbuilding was constructed without permits. A notice of abatement was sent to the property owner that was listed on the property assessor's website at that time. The owner at that time did not respond to that letter, and a new abatement letter was sent to the current property owners on April 14, after staff realized that the ownership had changed. The current property owners are working with staff to address the violations, but they would like to request to keep the alterations to the front porch. So the 1951 sandboard map does not show a covered porch associated with this house, and the circa 1968 property assessor's photo shows the pre-addition porch configuration. There is no physical evidence of a different porch roof or porch with posts to the ground for this house. The bracketed stoop covering is typical of the era of construction. The new porch roof extends to match the front wall of the house and includes a gabled portion that was built around the existing bracketed gable stoop covering. The new gabled roof ties into the shed, into a shed roof. And the new porch roof includes posts to the ground and to an existing brick pedestal. In order to meet the design guidelines, additions to historic buildings should be located at the rear in a way that will not disturb the front facade. In addition, porches and primary entrances are considered character-defining features, which the Secretary of Interior Standards requires to be preserved. So for these reasons, staff recommends that the front porch addition does not meet Section 2B2A of the Design Guidelines, and recommends that it be removed and the original bracketed stoop covering remain. The outbuilding meets all guidelines except for the windows, which are just a generic vinyl window. The applicant is working with staff to replace the windows so that the outbuilding can meet the guidelines. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the outbuilding with the condition that the windows be replaced to meet the design guidelines and be approved by staff prior to purchase and installation. And staff recommends disapproval of the addition to the front porch, finding that it does not meet Section 2B2A of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation District Handbook and Design Guidelines. Staff further recommends that the unpermitted front porch roof be removed and the original bracketed stoop covering beneath be retained within 60 days.
Thank you, Ms. Sargeant. Is applicant present? Yes, please come forward, state your name, and present your case.
Good afternoon. I'm Willard Younger. My wife Christine and I are here this afternoon. First, thank you for considering our application. We moved to Nashville in January and closed on our house on February 4. Before we purchased the house, we were looking for a home in a historic neighborhood. We know there's a lot of new construction going up, and we wanted to know that we're going to be in somewhere that was protected and beautiful. And so we actually proactively reached out to Historic prior to purchasing. On January 8, we reached out to Shawn Alexander to inquire whether there was anything at issue with the property. And we got an email back saying that we would need approval for further alterations and changes. We took that as a bill of clean health, and don't really know what further we could have done at the time to confirm that nothing had been done to, that would have required, that constituted a store violation or needed a permit. On April 14, we received a notice of abatement. We were definitely really surprised that it contradicted what we thought was a clean bill of health just a month earlier. And we were also kind of surprised that the new roof addition, which had gone in in 2016, didn't come to the attention of Historic until eight days after we purchased the house, and not during the previous five years. So we had to reach out to the sellers for more information, because we didn't construct this. They indicated to us that it was instructed for structural reasons, that there was water getting to the foundation, which had caused some lateral movement, and they'd had to hire USS to do some work on the house to take care of that in 2015. So in 2016, they put up the roof to allow the water to flow further away from the foundation and not to pool on the front porch. April 29, Paul Hoppen from the Historic staff came by. We explained to him the situation, and he was very kind and good with dealing with us. We really appreciate the staff being so amenable to working with us during this difficult situation. May 10, we got the information from USS. The repairs were conducted on the foundation in 2015, and the roof was conducted slightly thereafter to address the underlying condition causing that, those problems with the foundation. Without the roof over the porch, the water does, did pool right on the concrete porch. So the extending not as far, you know, we could get the water that would flow off the roof not to land there, but anything coming directly down would still land there. May 27, we had Hidden Trail Exteriors come out for a site visit and size it up. They examined the garage and the front porch roof. They're working with us to replace the windows in the garage with staff, and they gave their opinion in the email that we attached to our application that the roof is structurally important. So the staff cites the Section 2B2A as the reason for the issue here. By nature of the problem, that the water was flowing in the front of the house, in addition to the back of the house, would not have solved this issue, it sounds like. We're not adding any additional space to the footprint of the house, not adding an enclosed porch. And as we understand it, and that's the best we can do in the situation we're in, coming in as new owners, we understand that the extension of the existing roof preserves the significant historical, architectural, and cultural material, being the house. It is compatible in that it does not contrast greatly with the size, scale, color, material, and character of the property, neighborhood, and environment, perhaps most poignantly is evidenced by the fact that nobody noticed it for five years, and our neighbors haven't noticed or complained about it either. Furthermore, as reflected by the staff's suggestion, the roof can be removed in the future without impairing the essential form and integrity of the original structure, as they're asking us to do now. So we would ask that the commission reconsider the suggestion of the staff if, find that the roof cannot continue to exist in its present condition. Given the amount of trouble that we've had finding contractors, even for small jobs in the wake of the tornado, bombing, and all the new construction in town, we would appreciate a bit of additional time to undertake these repairs. So just in conclusion, we're good faith buyers of the property. We appreciate the work of Melissa, Paul, Rob, and everybody else at the staff who's been really helpful with this. We want to work together to find a way to resolve this that's in the best interest of preserving the property. And from what we've learned, that best solution is to keep the front porch roof as it is, to divert water away from the foundation. We are open to continuing to work with Historic for any suggestions on how we can improve the existing roof and its presentation to increase its coherence with the property, the neighborhood, and the environment. And so at this time, we strongly request reconsider the suggestion, and if you decline to do so, that you could please grant us an extension of time of another six months to take care of this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yan. Commissioner, do you have any question to the applicant at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a second.
Mr. Younger, so if I have this right, that you bought the house with the roof, that porch roof already on?
Yes, that was constructed in 2016.
Okay, okay. And I just want to welcome you to Nashville in Tennessee. I hope you have a pleasant time here, and hopefully we can work something out for you.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
One more. You said when you purchased the home, you reached out to Historic? Why, I'm just wondering, why would, for what purpose?
We were looking at other neighborhoods where there was not an overlay, and so it was something we were talking about a realtor with, you know, potentially building a, you know, dwelling over the garage or something like that in the future. So we wanted to know what future permitting we might need to get if we wanted to make extensions, because it kind of factored into our value of the property.
I was just curious. So, I mean, specific to your property, you said someone, they told you generally, but they might not have told you specifically, your house is A-OK.
We attach the correspondence to the application, but I think the exact wording the realtor uses would be along the lines of, is there anything else the seller should know about the property? And just confirming that it's actually in the Belmont Hillsborough Historical Overlay, because it is kind of on the edge, and we did want to ensure that we were in it.
Yeah, I wasn't, didn't know that I was, my name would be invoked here. I just saw the email. The realtor reached out to me and asked if it was in the overlay, and I responded that it was in the overlay and sent a link to the Design Guidelines. To say that I characterized it as a, as the house having a clean bill of health would be inaccurate.
I'll add to that, too, that it was probably like 10 years ago. We used to be able to drive the districts on a regular basis to catch work that was done without a permit, but now with more than 11,000 properties and more overlays coming, we can't do that anymore. So there would be no way for us to know that work had been, had taken place without a permit unless we had physically gone out there and looked at it. And I don't, that didn't sound like what we were being asked to do. And I don't, that didn't sound like what we were being asked to do.
Any other question to the applicant commissioners? If I may, I do have one additional question. So, when you purchased, a roof, a front porch roof was already existed. What about the outbuilding? Was it already existed as well?
Yes, we understand that that was built in early 2020. The front porch roof, the sellers had told us, was built in 2016.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Chair. I want to add that the couple did reach out to me once they knew, once they were informed of, of the violation and the situation. And I think they are, you know, I appreciate staff working with them, and I think that they sincerely are, you know, want to be, want to be good neighbors and appreciative of the historic guidelines of our neighborhood. And I want to shake my finger at the person, at the owner who did this and then sold it to, you know, sold them a property with, that had been, with, with structures and alterations that had been done without the proper permits. And I want them to pay for what these folks need to, need to do to fix it. But, that's not something I think we decide here. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna weigh in exactly on the porch issue. I do, I do hope that they, if you want them to return the porch to the way it's supposed to be, I kind of do hope you give them some understanding when it comes to how quickly they're able to do that. But I'm not going to go so far as to say, leave it like it's, is now. Because I just don't know the background of, you know, when you all make decisions about questions of structural damage and how that could change a guideline. And so I really am going to leave that to you and staff. But, I do appreciate, like, again, appreciate staff working with them. I looked at the picture of it, I talked to them on the phone, and I looked at the picture of it, and it looks a lot like my, my historic house in Hillsborough West End. Anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Commissioners, Commissioner Fitz.
First, I want to say that this is just a, such a hard situation, and I, it's an unfortunate situation, and I really do hate this for the current owners. One thing, being new to Nashville, and probably new to the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, is that one of the things that, in all of our, all of our overlays, I mean, very rarely, I would go as far to say, probably never, do we allow alterations to the front of a house. It is something that we are very strict about. We have had countless people sit here in this room with us, asking us to alter their front porches, and asking us to alter the front of their house, asking us to move doors. And in the time that I've been on the commission, we have never granted that. And so that's what's really difficult about this, is that we would not grant that if you ask us for it today. And I hate that, that the previous owners did this, and you're kind of stuck with their bad decision. As far as the roof being needed for structural purposes, being an architect, I mean, there are countless ways to move water away from a foundation. And so, I, while that's one way that probably helped to move the water away from the foundation, there are other ways that that can be done. So that's just, those are my, those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Fitz. Any other comment? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I do agree with Commissioner Fitz on this. It's just a really unfortunate situation and for the owners. And again, it's no fault of their own, and yet now they have this house. But again, you know, three months from now, this would be brought up in a case as, well this, they did this to their porch, you know, with no backstory of the case. It just happens time and time again. And again, I hate to, you know, punish the current owners because it's of no fault of their own. But, for the house, the house itself, this is something that we would not have permitted. And therefore, I have a hard time letting it stand as is. You know, if the commission votes to have it be removed, you know, I would, I would be open to more time, you know, different things that we could do to help the current owners, if that is how we vote. Absolutely be okay with figuring that out. And, you know, I just hope that somehow, there can be some recourse on their end with the previous owners who were, you know, they could show they were notified of this violation prior to selling the home. Again, I don't work in that era, area, but that, yeah, this is a really tough one. But, I just see in the future of this being brought up as a case for someone else to do something to their porch, even though, because technically, we would be allowing it if we allow it to stand, no matter the situation.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other comment? Seeing none, is there a motion? Commissioners, Commissioner Mahal.
I make a motion to approve the staff recommendations for 1906 Beechwood Avenue with the caveat that the, that the request for six months to repair be granted.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Seeing no other comments, all in favor in the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Well, I'm sorry, applicant, sometimes our commissioner has to make tough decisions, and hopefully you can have some kind of remedy, such as reaching out to previous owner and so forth. But I really appreciate your understanding and try to work with the history commission staff. Thank you. So, next case will be presented by Ms. Bledog.
4122 Aberdeen is a circa 1940 brick Tudor revival-style home that contributes to the historic character of the Cherokee Park neighborhood. In March 2016, MHCC staff issued an administrative permit for the construction of a 20-foot by 22-foot, one-story outbuilding that would not be used as a dada. The applicant subsequently constructed a dormer on the outbuilding, which was not part of the approved plans, and which not, which did not meet the design guidelines in size and scale at that time. In 2018, MHCC staff discovered the dormer, which did not meet the preservation permit nor the design guidelines. The owner then asked the commission for permission to retain the dormer. Because the design guidelines for the Cherokee Park Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay required that all dormers on outbuildings be inset two feet from the wall below, the commission determined that the dormer did not meet the design guidelines and should be removed. A key factor in the commission's decision was that the commission did not want other applicants to think that the wall dormers, like this one, would be approved in the neighborhood. In May 2021, Cherokee Park's design guidelines were updated as part of the consolidation of the design guidelines. In the new design guidelines, outbuildings are permitted to have one wall dormer, limited to a width of 14 feet. Given the change in the design guidelines to allow for wall dormers, the owner requests that the commission reconsider approving the wall dormer at 4122 Aberdeen Row. The garage is 20 feet by 22 feet, or about 440 square feet. The wall dormer has a width of approximately 21 feet. The design guidelines allow for each outbuilding to have a wall dormer with a maximum of 14 feet. So, this wall dormer is about seven feet wider than what would be allowed on the design guidelines. But staff finds that it is still appropriate because the overall height and scale of the outbuilding is much smaller than what would be allowed under the current design guidelines. And you can see here on this chart that, you know, under the existing design guidelines that stand today, they could have a much larger outbuilding in terms of overall height, overall footprint, overall eve or wall height. And it's just that dormer width, which is bigger than what the current design guidelines allow. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the dormer, finding that it meets Section 7B of Part 1 of the design guidelines for the turn of century districts. I think the owner is here, but I'm happy to answer any questions before then.
Thank you, Ms. Bledog.
I have questions.
Sure.
Hey, Melissa. So, we, we disapproved this request three years ago?
Yes.
Why was nothing done? Usually, we have a time limit.
Sure. I think there was a time limit. Maybe Robin might know this case better than me, but I think it ended up going to the legal department and was kind of in the works there. So, we had sent it to legal, and it was kind of, after a certain point, it's out of our hands, and it's in the legal department's hands.
Okay. Is that, that's it? Okay. Is this a request for a rehearing, then?
No, I think because there's new information, which is the new design guidelines, it's a new, it's just like a new application, because there's new design guidelines versus in 2018, they were under the old design guidelines, where wall dormers were just flat-out not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good afternoon. Jamie Holland on behalf of the homeowners. Thank you, Madam Chair, long time no see. Same for some of you others. Good to see y'all. Thank you. I would just advocate in support of the staff recommendation, and don't really have any other facts to add. I think she did a great job, and was very comprehensive. And, but I realize you have some questions for the owner, and I would just leave them to you, unless you have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Councilmember Holland.
Hello. My name is Mark Gillum. I am the homeowner at 4122. Good to see you guys again. Absolutely. I'll, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I, okay, then I'll, I'll pose it again. As you can see today, we've had some tough cases, and we tend to draw pretty consistently lines for violations like this and generally uphold them. So, I guess I'm wondering why, three years ago, when our decision was made, it was, what's happened between now and then that the correction was not made?
All right, so, after our last hearing, I never heard, never received any, any notice, notification from your team, from, from the staff that's here. Originally, I never received any sort of notification at all. That actually was sent to the contractor, I believe. Staff should have all that documented. So I received zero notification on how to abate this, on how to move forward. So, that's, that's where we got to.
My question is, I mean, this was your property then, correct? And you probably followed this case. Are, Robin, are we, when the cases are decided, do we, don't we just expect the property owners to follow the case and understand what their guidelines are?
Certainly, that's the expectation, but an owner can make the decision not to do the work and appeal. I don't recall if this was an actual appeal or not. And then if the work doesn't happen, that's, as Ms. Bledog said, that's when we turn it over to Metro Legal. And it is, I think a court date may even be scheduled pretty soon, but, but again, then we had a look at the new design guidelines, and based on it being a smaller outbuilding, then what they could do, we thought it might be appropriate and somewhat consistent with some similar type of situations you've had in the past with smaller outbuildings.
Commissioners, do you have any question to the applicant? Seeing none, do you have any additional comment, applicant?
Just that the, the current design guidelines permit this. You know, but the prior guidelines basically prohibited wall dormers, and now they allow them. Thank you.
Is there any public wish to comment on this case? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Commissioners, any further question, discussion?
As Commissioner Price mentioned, we have had several difficult cases today, a few where I think good actors have fallen into bad circumstances. I think this is a case when a bad actor has fallen into a good circumstance, to be quite frank with you. So, that's, that's how it is. And my, you know, they flouted the rules in 2018. They happened into a circumstance where now it would be allowed, so they're coming back. And that's, that's how it is. So, I, in that case, I move for, or I don't move, but I would go with staff recommendation due to the fact that now it would be allowed, but just to say that that's how I feel about it.
So, is that a motion, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Mahal?
I just want to say, I agree with you 100%. That's a great way to word it. And, so.
Commissioner Fitz?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand this correctly, but if I read this, the, the width of the dormer is 21 feet, and what's allowed is 14 feet under current design guidelines. So it is larger than what is allowed. If they're allowed to have wall dormers, just not one as wide as.
Yes, it is seven feet wider than what would be allowed under the current design guidelines. Our thinking with this was that they could, you know, if they were coming here today with a new garage, they could have a much larger footprint, a much taller ridge height, and they could have dormers on both sides. Looking back, and I'm not sure who was here at that meeting in 2018, but what, looking back at the discussion in the minutes, when the commissioner has deliberated, their, their main concern was that they didn't want somebody seeing this and seeing a wall dormer and thinking that that would be, that they could also have something like that. So, staff thought that now that people can have wall dormers, perhaps it would be appropriate to have, you know, that this one could, could be appropriate.
May I ask a legal, legal question, then, for council? Do we have any guidance on, yes, we've updated the, the design guidelines since this, we heard this case and denied the dormer. Can we expect to see other cases like this, where people just didn't do what we asked them to do, and now they're coming back to ask forgiveness? How do we consider that?
I mean, I think that's certainly a concern. Right now, any permits that you've issued under old design guidelines, they're still required to comply with the old design guidelines. When you, if you go and you reconsider it under new guidelines, then certainly, and I defer to staff to know how many outstanding issues there are that haven't been fixed. But certainly, if you permit it for this one, you would need to consider it for others who haven't complied yet.
I'll add to the list of our outstanding permits, violations are in current conservation zoning plays, new guidelines primarily in other districts.
Only for the fact that it is a small outbuilding and rather than a larger outbuilding on a tiny lot on the street, smaller on the street. I'm for regarding 22, I move for approval, staff recommendations to allow this under the guideline.
Thank you. Any other discussion question? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Three ayes, oh, opposed?
I oppose.
Three ayes and two. So, as a chair, I would go for majority, so I vote aye. Next case, Ms. Baldock.
The next case, the next case is 405 Broadway, which is vacant L-shaped lot that has frontage along both Broadway and Fourth Avenue South. The proposed infill, four-story tall, a stepped-back fifth story. The infill's height, including its mechanicals, elevator upper runs meet the design guidelines. The masonry portion of the infill is three-story, and it is capped by a cornice. Above the cornice, the fourth story of the infill will be primarily glass, which both marks the structure of infill and also means that the masonry mapping of the three-story will match the scale of the two structures on either side. Staff has requested two design changes to this project, so I'm going to focus the presentation on the design changes, just to kind of stay focused. First are the arches on both facades. Staff finds that the proposed central two-story arches on both facades do not meet the design guidelines in terms of proportion and rhythm of openings. Two-story arch window openings are not found historically in the Broadway Historic Preservation zoning overlay. Moreover, the design features skew the proportion of openings on the lower three facades. Rather than the window openings on the lower floors being taller than those above, the arches skew the proportions, making the second floors seem taller than the first floors. Staff recommends that the arches be removed, and the second-floor central bays have punched window openings like those on the third story. The second set of design changes have to do with how the infill interacts with the architectural elements of the historic building at 401 Broadway, which is commonly referred to as merchants, so I might just start calling it merchants. The infill is designed to extend the entire width of the lot on both Broadway and Fourth Avenue South and come right up to the sidewalk line. That meets the historic context along Fourth Avenue South. However, along Broadway, the historic top cornice and storefront cornice and column of merchants turn the corner of the building and extends into the area of 405 Broadway. The design of 405 Broadway does not currently accommodate these historic features, kind of turning the corner, and it seems to require them being partially removed. The ground floor storefront elements are restored elements from the 1980s. You can see on the left that previously, a one-story mid-century structure covered these features. On the right is a photo of merchants after that mid-20th century structure was demolished and when merchants was under renovation, so you can kind of see parts of the column are exposed but not yet restored. Staff was unable to find earlier photographs. Before that mid-century one-story structure was constructed, but we were able to find a Sanborn map that dates to 1897, which is just a few years after the merchants' building was constructed. You can see that there's a small gap in between the three-story merchants' building and the.
Ms. Baldock? Ms. Baldock, could you please?
Sorry about that. So, this is an 1897 Sanborn map, and it shows a gap that there was between the merchants' building and the one-story structure next door, which implies that there, that the, you know, historic features did originally turn that corner. Staff therefore finds that the storefront column and cornice likely did turn the corner, and then the 1980s restoration of the building restored this historic feature. Because these elements of 401 Broadway are restorations of historic conditions, their partial demolition does not meet the design guideline. Staff recommends that the design of the infill along Broadway be revised so that the architectural features of 401 Broadway are not altered. We don't, I think there's a couple different solutions for how that can be done, you know. We are open to different suggestions that the architects may come up with in order to, you know, maybe set the building back or give it a little gap in between. I think there's, again, a couple different options the architects could consider, or if they have another option, we're happy to look at that as well. So, quickly, here are the elevation drawings, just so you can see them. Here is the structure, the Broadway facade, and you can kind of see there's a recessed fifth story, which meets the design guidelines. The location of railing also meets the design guidelines. Again, here's the Fourth Avenue South facade, that recessed story, and even the overhang, the kind of canopy open area, that meets the set requirement, as does the railings. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: Central two-story arches on both facades be removed, and the second-floor central bays have punched window openings at the third story. The infill be reconfigured so that the storefront cornice and column and the top cornice at 401 Broadway can remain unaltered. Staff approve all masonry samples, the ceramic tiles, the storefront systems, all windows and doors, the Fourth Avenue South metal screen, the glass and metal for the fourth story, and the rooftop railing details, plating, and basically all of the materials prior to purchase and installation. Staff approve the final location of all HVAC units and utilities, and that the applicant return to HCC for approval of signage and any pertinence that isn't part of the package before you today. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed infill meets Section 3 of the Broadway Historic Preservation Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Baldock. Is applicant present? Come forward and present the case.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Gina Manuel from Centric Architecture. We are, we're happy with the staff's overall approval. There is one feature that we did hope to keep as a part of the design, if possible, and that is the, around the main entry, the arched opening that was mentioned. And we have a few exhibits here to show you how we landed on that. So, this first slide that I have, if you can see, it takes all the way from first to fifth, and it really shows you, you know, as the, as it develops over time, from the river up Broadway, we really have a lot of the existing fabric remaining. You can see where 405 is sort of tagged in the middle of that streetscape. Most of this was developed in the late 1800s, early 1900s. If you go to this sheet, we found it helpful for ourselves to say, well, really, how many new buildings or non-contributing buildings really are present in this stretch? And you can see there's very few. There are a few that were in the 1940s, really only two or three that I recall that likely would have come before you, or are new buildings, you know, in the, after the year 2000. So, we find ourselves in a pretty unique situation with this infill in the building, especially one that wraps around. It's an L-shaped lot. It's very unique. And so, we wanted to kind of talk you through how we got to our design. So, these, we've pulled a few precedent images. As we were working on the design, we looked at some historic buildings, both in Nashville, the ones we are showing are in Nashville and in other locations, to really use them as, you know, historic precedent. You know, it is a new building. We are not trying to pretend that it's an old building, but we did want to really pull from some design inspiration from some existing features. So, we thought it might be helpful for you to see both the address, what overlay they are in, as well as the year built. And so, these are a few examples. One on Union Street, the Hotel Ingo, Symphony, not a historic building, I think we all know that, it's not in the overlay. We wanted to point that out. It is a building close by, that we felt like the architecture really worked what we were doing. I think the best example that we looked at was St. Cloud. It's in a different overlay. It is in a National Registered District, so it is a similar type of area, but really felt that architecture, you know, there was a really emphasis on the entry. It accented that opening. It had a similar arched feature, you know, double-height base. And so, we were trying to really show something like that in a new way on our building. As we go through all of these examples, these are really just some of the archways we had looked at throughout town that really inspired us to include something more, more arched in our design. These were some other locations around the corner and close by. Some of these are in overlays as well that really show accents at entry points, which is what we are trying to do. I will point out that our site is very thin. I know there are some thin properties on the side that are narrow. We are largely 34 feet on the Broadway side. It is a very narrow building, and so, you know, a way to really accentuate that entry, you know, pulling on the design precedence is what we were trying to do. So, many of these, many of them had double-height entries. Those were things we were trying to replicate in our design. Again, for example, even on merchants' itself, it's not the same. I'm going to talk really loudly. That central opening on merchants' or that central feature was really something we were trying to do in a different way on our building, as the majority of the other parts were setback. So, we took all of these precedents, and we tried to channel them to an architecture that was a new building, and we find that it's a very unique situation on Broadway. And so, we are asking for your consideration to keep, to keep that element. We don't take any issue with any of the other conditions. I'm sure they're happy to work with staff through those as we move.
Thank you. Does Commissioner have any question to the applicant at this time? Thank you. Is there any public who wish to comment on this case? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Mahal?
I want to disclose something here. One of your employees is, I've worked with him for many years on a nonprofit board downtown, and I consider him a friend and a very smart person, and I commend you for hiring him. And so, I just wanted to say that even though I have a great relationship with this gentleman, it's not going to affect my vote here today. I just wanted to disclose it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahal. Is there any questions or comment? I will pause for a second, I'm sure. Commissioner Price?
Just want to, what immediately comes to mind is we're often asked as a commission to allow designs, well, let me back up. Staff recommendation is based on historic context, and in this case, for, over the last several years, since I've been on the commission, historic context has been defined as the block face that we're looking at. So, while I appreciate the applicant's presentation and bringing in other two-story or more arched openings throughout downtown, typically, we consider what's the immediate historic context on the block that we're working. So, I think it's a great project. I look forward to it being completed, but I am inclined to support the staff recommendation when it comes to the, to the entrance opening and the massing and size and rhythm of opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Any other questions?
Just going to, loud as a problem I have, not being, being a lot of the problem I have. The project, I mean, again, I haven't been on Broadway in so long, I forgot there's still vacant lots, but I do, I guess I would like to hear everyone's thoughts on the facade and the two-story arches. I understand it's, it is kind of uncharted territory for us for these empty lots that are available for infill. You know, I just go back to the guideline.
Any comments? Commissioner Williams?
I'm going to be frank, I really like this building. If it were left up to be, I would like, okay, run with it, but as one of the newest members of this panel, I tend to be supportive of what staff presents. But I do want to take a moment to commend you on whoever came up with this idea. I absolutely love this building.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Fitz, do you have a comment?
Yeah, well, I mean, I appreciate everyone's comments so far and really appreciate the staff's, you know, attention to this. But I guess I'm inclined, you know, the arched window isn't truly, I mean, it is broken into two pieces. It's not truly, it's not one giant window. It has the appearance of that because of the arch, but it is broken, broken into the upper, you know, the portion on the first floor, the portion on the second floor. And so, I am, I'm inclined to approve it as designed, except I do, I really, I do feel strongly about how the cornice and the, kind of that first, first-floor cornice and the upper cornice, how those tie in together. I feel like the, the design of it on the new building just kind of slams into the cornice at merchants without, without really any attention to how those two things resolve each other. So, I would like to see those both at the, above the first floor and at the top. I'd like to see that resolve itself better and seem more intentional. Those are, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other question? Mahal?
With, I would make a note, to 405 Broadway, I approve that we accept the application with staff recommendations, including the conditions that are listed.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Is there second? Don't understand. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, or, aye?
All right, the next one is 322 Harvard. 322 Harvard is circa 1925 bungalow that contributes to the Richland Weston Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The house has a clipped side gabled roof. The original historic house had a footprint of about 1,400 square feet. A modest rear dormer was added in 2005. Four years later, a rear addition was constructed, including a shed roofed and rear gabled portion. This addition was inset appropriately and approved by staff. It increased the footprint by about 800 square feet. Then in 2016, the commission approved a new addition which increased the main level living space, created a three-car garage at basement level, and included a rear screened-in porch. This project added about 1,800 square feet to the house, bringing the total footprint to about 4,000 square feet. Today, the applicant is asking for an addition, for another addition with several different components. First, we'd like to enclose a current patio space into a breakfast room as seen here in blue. Staff finds this to be appropriate as the work will not increase the height or width and involves additions, alterations to a prior addition. Also proposed is the enclosure of a portion of the existing screen porch on the main level. Additionally, the ground-level open porch on the rear indicated by the blue arrow will be enclosed and converted into conditioned space. Either of these alterations will increase the footprint or height of the existing structure and staff finds them to be appropriate. A covered rear porch and new stairs will be added. This is a modest addition at the rear which staff also finds appropriate. Finally, a ridge, a ridge raise and rear dormer are proposed. The guidelines state that ridge raises are not appropriate atop of roofs with clipped cables. Further, the additional height and massing added to a modest historic house that has already tripled in footprint due to prior additions is not compatible with the historic house. The guidelines only allow for additions that step taller than the historic ridge when there is no other option. This house has a very deep rear yard and even after three previous additions, it remains more than 60 feet to the rear setback line. Due to the slope of the lot, the previous additions have been able to add an additional level of living space below the main level. Adding further space to the rooftop creates three levels of living space at what was once a modest single-story house. Staff finds that additional rooftop massing stepping higher than the original ridge line is not appropriate in this instance, as other options for additions are available and have been utilized. With the removal of the ridge raise and rooftop massing above the historic ridge height, staff finds that the project meets the guidelines. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Ridge raise and any portion of the addition that goes taller than the original house shall be removed. Staff review and approve the final windows, doors, and porch roofing color prior to purchase and installation. And the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side, beyond the midpoint of the house, and utility meters shall be located on the side of the building within the front corner. Oh, the front corner, sorry. Alternative, alternative mechanical and utility locations must be approved prior to an administrative sign-off on building permit, finding that the project meets to be of the Richard Weston Neighborhood Conservation Zoning District handbook and design guidelines. The applicant is present and would like to speak, I believe. Also, please note that the commission received letters of support from neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Please forward and proceed your presentation.
All right. Can you all hear, should I really speak up because we're having back forth to the back? My name is Van Punt, I am the architect for 322 Harvard Avenue, working for Jim and Elsa Jacobs, who are also present here. Thank you all for taking the time to hear this case. As you've heard from the councilperson, she is, she is supportive of this ridge raise. We are fully, we're very thrilled with staff's recommendations of the other components. Jacobs, this is an interesting project. You've seen and reviewed the proposed plans, you've heard the staff's presentation. This is not a usual addition that we've come to, so there's been a lot of work done before we were engaged. That being said, Jacobs asked to help them explore ways to add three bedrooms to their existing home early this year to better accommodate their growing family. As staff has analyzed, existing conditions present challenges to creating additional space for the home. We appreciate staff's recommendation for the approval of the lower and main floor according to the proposed plan, but we do take exception to staff's recommendation for this approval of the ridge raise and second-floor expansion. However, and ask for your consideration for approval of it and the additional bedroom space it will provide for the home and expanded attic space. Staff indicated that this house now has three floors of living space. The lower floor of the addition is a garage, while it is accommodation space, it is not living space. So I'd like to make that kind of clear. That's a key component. The component that they, that the staff has recommended for this approval on the ridge raise is within guidelines, it says, and I'm quoting, "Ridge raises are most appropriate for one-story side gabled buildings without clipped cables." The key phrasing here is the word "most." That wording presents the intent of the design guidelines, that there may be situations when a ridge raise to a clipped gable house may be appropriate. An instance might be that is if the major form of the roof is actually a continuous crossing ridge with clipped gable eve details is the case here. Clipped cables here are only on the overhang. This a true clipped or jerking head roof configuration where the major form of the roofs were clipped cables, we would likely not be asking this consideration as the form itself is prohibitive of such an additional roof form. This can be in reference to the design guidelines in ten directions. I provided you a packet that just passed around, a couple of illustrations of a typical fully clipped gable homes for your reference. These show you that a jerking head roof or a clipped gable roof is truly an incorporated architectural element. There's not a lot of space to do a ridge raise. This is different for this house. This roof form is a different situation from that full clipped gable roof form. We do understand that staff is concerned about the scale of the previously approved additions and that's why we do think this proposal is the most quietly asked way to add any space. We ask that you take the whole of the property into consideration and deliberations. In fact, there's at least one example in the neighborhood at 307 Weston Place, which is on page two of your handout, that does have clipped cables and a ridge raise. We are not sure when that ridge raise was accomplished, whether or not that was under the guidelines at that time. However, this existing home does show this kind of configuration where clipped cables are only at the overhangs. Further, the existing rear additions do gain a lower level due to grade. This should not present a reasonable ridge raise of the type common in Richland Weston from being executed within the intent of the design guidelines, which also states the purpose of a ridge raise is to allow for conditioned space in attic and to discourage large rear side additions. In this case, there are already additions present, but we do not wish to enlarge them even further. We're trying to work within the shape of the existing houses, best as possible. We did not come to this application without options. We discussed three possible ways to execute attic with the desired specs of this home with staff, even deferring a month to explore the options with staff. Not one of these possible other options, which are also included in your form, were, have changed staff's recommendation to us in discussions with Jenny Warren, who was our staff contact and was great. So we were left, we and our clients were left with the decision to make about what to bring to you all. We do think that this simple ridge raise does not overwhelm, does not overwhelm the existing house. It does not further increase the visible massing of the house and we really appreciate your consideration of supporting this. You have had multiple letters from immediately adjacent property owners. You've had, you've had the support of the councilperson and I would like to turn this over to the Jacobs to speak a little bit more. Thank you all. I'll be here for questions.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Jacobs. I'm the owner of 322 Harvard Avenue. Myself along with my wife Elsa, who is here, we have three kids, one of which is nine weeks old. My wife is still breastfeeding and pumping and so for her getting out here and not enjoying the time that we have, our turn to speak, I hope shows just some of the importance of this matter to us and our family. Next month, we will have lived our house for eight years. We absolutely love the neighborhood and enjoy the friendship of neighbors. It is extremely convenient to everything we do and our daily lives and we're committed to helping our neighborhood continue to thrive. With our growing family, it's become more practical for us to consider adding more bedrooms in our house. Existing bedrooms still have the original amount of closet space, which is a fraction the size of the closet space that's built today in modern houses. Just because our little girls love to change in and out of their mermaid and dresses frequently does not create any hardship for you to objectively consider. However, the fact that the original closets are still the same size with inability to expand them, given the layout of the house and not being able to add to the side of our house, we feel does create a challenge. Additionally, the upstairs, that should house what, what would be a fourth bedroom is not a practical bedroom, since a person like myself who's just five, six feet can only stand up in the middle of the room and if I move a little more than a foot to the right or a foot to the left of the center of the room, I will hit my head. Additionally, our stairwell up to our half-story is not up to today's standards of codes. The stairs are so steep that it is not safe for our girls to even go upstairs and much less utilize it as an extra bedroom. This is the same for anyone else, especially seniors, given the steepness of the stairs. Therefore, all of our living space is actually all on the same floor as I'm not even able to stand up in our basement space because of the plumbing and wiring that hang down from the floor doors. Furthermore, it is strongly recommended that we add some workings to our house because of the settling of the house and potential to settle more in the near future. We did end up adding many beams so that the settling would no longer occur in an effort to stabilize our house, just taking some potential living area on the basement level. As I've shared, without a ridge raise, the ceiling height would be just...
Do you have any question to the applicant commissioners at this time? Thank you, appreciate it. Is there any public wish to comment on this case? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Commissioners, any comment? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I can't get behind the ridge raise. I just think it's, again, these are tough situations, you know, we know there are families living in these homes, but you know, there's, you know, I guess it's not our jobs to design the spaces for each and every family. Our job is for the home and what it looks like in the historic, you know, neighborhood conservation overlays. This home, for instance, I think has already seen quite a few additions. It was a small one-story home, now it has already been added on to and I just don't see that as a hardship for a need for a ridge raise. I think it's very clear that ridge raises are most appropriate without the clipped gable, number one, and when there's no other option or, but this house has already been added on to. So I'm, I'm fully in support of all of staff recommendations on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Price?
Yes, this is, I'm going to do my best to channel Cyril Stewart, who I wish were here right now. I have a feeling he may say, I agree with Commissioner Jones and I just want to say that I don't, I wasn't present when the design guidelines, when the decision was made to say that ridge raises are only appropriate for side gable houses and not clipped gable houses. I don't know the, how that decision came to be made. I just know that it is and the design guidelines throughout the city for all of our districts were created through a democratic process where the neighborhoods came together and agreed on the terms and the language. And to me, there's just no, there's not been a reason given why we should not take the guidelines at their word for this case. So I understand that, you know, the current neighbors are in support, but again, it's, this house has been expanded many times and it's not our purview to change the language of the guidelines as it's written during these public meetings. That's done, that was done years ago on the front end. So that's, that's where I am and I think pretty consistent with a lot of the decisions we make on, on the commission. So I understand the need for additional family space, but we're, we're bound by the language of, of the guidelines as it's written.
Yes, regarding 322 Harvard Avenue, I move for approval of the project with all staff recommendations, including the addition of the ridge raise, the original...
Thank you. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, the second. Any comment? Seeing none, or, ever say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Sergeant, please see.
All right, the next item is 236 White Avenue. This house is a circa 1930 bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the living and weight, the historic preservation zoning overlay. In 2016, the commission approved a side rear addition as well as alterations to the historic house. Some of the approved alterations were completed and the side addition was constructed, but the trim and coast were not made as specified on the plans associated with 2016. Construction on the rear addition, however, did not begin and that preservation permit has since expired. The proposed addition is located at the rear of the historic house, does not have the double-headed footprint and is no taller than the existing house. However, it is a full two-story addition on a modest one-and-a-half-story home. The eave height of the addition is approximately nine feet taller than that of the historic house. While the commission found that this two-story form could be appropriate in 2016, the current commission's interpretation of the guidelines has taken into account the neighborhood's concerns of the seismic scale of additions and found that full two-story additions to one-and-one-and-a-half-story homes may not be appropriate and meet the design guidelines for the districts. For this reason, staff recommends that the eave height of the addition be reduced to be similar in height to the eaves of the historic house. Living space in upper level can be achieved with cross-gable form more doors that are scaled to meet the guidelines, which see these often on additions. A side elevation and front and rear elevation, including staff's approval of the project, following conditions. It brings out that the height of the addition do use similar to that of the historic.
Thank you. Sergeant, it's applicant present. Applicant for procedure case?
Afternoon, I'm James Kinnon. I'm the architect for the addition for the current owner Brad Bell. The actual applicant is Daniel, the proposed owner. So they're in the middle of a transaction to sell the property. I'm here to explain and answer questions. I thought we had, I thought we would have had the slide that showed adjacent properties that was in the reports. I guess not. This property actually even complicated. I'm a neighbor. I'm across the street. It actually sits between a new construction that is a two-story historically appropriate that's approved, and on the other side is a historic house with a two-story addition. So this is kind of infill between two-story additions, which was seemed to be appropriate in 2016. For various reasons, Brad Bell started the construction and never finished it. Foundations have been put in place. At this point, he's in the process of trying to sell it. Current proposed buyer is not, is not interested in purchasing it, primarily because the first recommendation, staff. Otherwise, I think we're all in agreement with staff recommendation. We understand that. The concern is that first one, that while we recognize, hey, can you go back, please? Yeah. So we recognize that the potential exists for some kind of cross gable, but if you look at the height of the eve on the existing house, you basically lose any second floor addition if we try to conform to that requirement. The proposed addition is stepped in, so it's outside the shadow of existing, and it is below the ridge line. So if we would ask, I guess the last thing is, so basically, the property is in the middle of a transaction, financial transaction, and so your decision would actually reduce the financial value of the house. That's probably outside, because I agree with you. It sounds that your role is to protect the house, and I agree with that. But that is the consideration. So we're in agreement with staff recommendation, except for number one. We'd like, number one to be struck, to be struck, and as proposed and originally approved in 2016, the house be allowed to be constructed, if I stumbled my way through that. Other than that, we don't have any complications like the other cases.
Thank you.
I'm the owner, Brad Bell, so if there's anything you need from me up here.
Appreciate it. Commissioner, do you have any question to the applicant? Is there any other public wish to comment? Seeing none, close public hearing. Commissioners, comment, questions, discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Always first one, bad news. But I do think part of our, as we've gone through several years now, as Nashville's been growing, applications for houses and additions to houses, infill and additions to historic houses have been, just continued to grow, and that has caused a lot of pushback in these neighborhoods and concerns over the size of houses. And I think infill houses, we take consideration of the neighborhood, but, you know, these historic contributing houses are the ones that we take most care of in how they're treated. And with that, you know, I understand that it's next to a two-story infill, you know, but that's, with this being, the historic house, we look at the historic house. So the addition, we look at the historic house, not the surrounding homes for this in my, in our experience here. So with that, thinking of that, I'm inclined to agree with staff. I just think it's a modest one-story home and one and a half story home, and, you know, we've just been trying to pull back on these large two-story additions, these modest one and a half story homes. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Any comments? If there's none, can enter the motion. Is there a motion?
Regarding 236 White Avenue, I move for approval of the project with all list of staff recommendations.
Thank you. That's our motion. Yes?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Motion second, and addition, seeing none, favor, opposed, or motion, please. Next, and, Ms. Ball, thank you.
Okay, my number is 2366. The state neighborhood, I see a lot of the houses in 2017, starting photos of the context. Up so two stories is within the last 10 years, right other property to the right. Those houses are outside the space overlay. The vacant lot marks the end of the boundaries. Two immediate is one and a half story, more one-story residential house, then on the other side is a two-story house. Most houses across the street, bottom row, are one and a half stories scale. The second one finds fill in meaning, build meet all base step, and that the step back is appropriate for the contact. Those recommend a walkway be added from the front porch to the sidewalk. Does escape proposed, I'd like to thank the applicant for saying this because it's very helpful. Does the in text it's, so it's number two, oh, six. Here's the second fill on an extra stories scale, maximum of 20 feet of the finished floor. A lot slow, kind of raw, height raised from front because of the variation in the house, the fountain. But as the fills have been able to learn historic, X with mixed and one story is with one or two story house. One just house that is raised, rolled to very recent fills. House will have width of two feet four inches and a crawl foot of about 1,440 square feet. I find all of this meet design lines. Here's design garage. Garage face the street. Staff is recommending that there be two garage bays. Rise garage, it's the guidelines. Staff is recommending approve with our third addition, two kind of non-stable ones are the front way to, from the front to the sidewalk, and the out, they have two separate garage doors. The applicant, does he have any questions? I'm also be to additions.
Ms. Ball, can, please, or, station, okay?
Chris Goldbeck with P J Design, Guy Design House, and I want to thank Melissa for her help in preparing this middle, and we're remunerated to all the recommendations from staff. And I've had my two minutes and happy to have any questions.
You, you have any questions? Seeing, thank you. Close hearing. Commissioner?
Your sixth place, move for the recommendation.
Well, there's a, you, commissioners, motion second, and this, seeing none, in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, cap. Move to next case. Thank you.
The next case is 1320 Rosa Parks Boulevard. 1320 Rosa Parks is currently a vacant lot. Rosa Parks Boulevard is the edge of German historic preservation overlay, and there are no historic structures on this block. Application to construct new four-story residential infill project. The proposed structure is low, dry, mixed-use and commercial building type. As per the guidelines, the structure will contain residences and will address the street drainage on Rosa Parks, with primary entrance and two secondary entrances. All service walkways from the sidewalk. The roof will be flat with a small portion of pitched roofing along Rosa Parks footage. The guidelines allow for a potential fifth story stepped back from all street-facing facades, a minimum of 10 feet. This project is proposed for a partial fifth floor, which meets these height requirements. The building sits on the front half of a lot, surface park in the rear, accessed by the alley. Staff finds the ceiling and setbacks to be appropriate. Site plan is not showing secondary entrances or walkways on the front elevation. This is an error. An applicant will provide a correct site plan there to permit. The materials, facade, articulation, proportion of opening windows, through form entrances, rooftop use, utilities, sidewalks and walkways, exterior lighting, parking, and apparatuses all meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the project following conditions. A rise site plan shall be provided, showing the secondary entrances on the primary facade as well as the walkways. M H Z C staff shall review and approve the following materials prior to purchase and installation: brick, metal siding, final doors, garage doors, windows, balcony railings, painting wall, and walkway material and roofing color. And staff shall review and approve any exterior lighting, including rooftop lighting, retaining walls or other. With these conditions, staff find that the proposed project meets Section 3 of German historic preservation zoning overlay design guidelines for new construction.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Is applicant present? Please come forward, station, okay?
I'm Blake Woodland with Root Arc, the architect on the project. I just wanted to add, we're obviously pleased with the, with the staff's feelings thus far. We had a wonderful meeting Monday with the neighborhood, and we're working with it on a few things. The rooftop deck and how it's, and how it's used and orientation and things. And we are also comfortable with the staff's thoughts on the lighting, especially on the roof, and how that looks. And I wanted to also point out the use of the building, obviously on the front half of the property to keep it away from the back half and the residential in the back. And I will just leave the rest of my time to questions and comments.
Thank you so much. Commissioner, is, do you have any question to the applicant? Seeing none, do you have any public comment? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Commissioners?
I just want to say, this is a beautiful project, and this is going to be a great addition to the German neighborhood. I just want to express my appreciation for it.
Here, Commissioner Hall, any other comment? Even, enter the motion?
A move that approved, staff recommendation for 1320 Rosa Parks Boulevard.
You, a second. Commissioner, please. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, cap. Thank you. Ms. Black, sorry, Black, please present last case.
Before, I have opened a 1966, the historic character of the hills neighborhood, I staffed a house extension, a 21. The lot is a shop with added 115 feet, see, probably a lot of the, the additions. The additions, infill, infill, or, determinations. The required 20 years, but the proposed one porch is ten feet from the property. Staff finds the construction of the one story porch in the rear section, per, first lot is usually a 110 feet, most lots are between 175 feet. Neighborhood addition, which is one story and a, with approximately 11 feet, they push back from the beach of a new apartment, have in house at 100. The right sided, which is for that, they're acting at a 8 feet, is being recorded at 10. Finds two stories, putting into the back historic tech, as two stories on the period, a 10 feet from the property. In addition, they approximately seven, wide, it's not a, um, crawl, state. Each door is supposed to be 20 feet from the property. Proposed will have garage door, 15, on the side line. The garage are reset additional, 2 feet, so kind of 50, or 20 feet from the line. Prop, 50 for the garage doors, which is to allow vehicles to connect safely from garage, not in a side or, applicant proposes two-story house with a height of 29 feet in the foundation line. F, two-scale is meet the contact, are basically two-story houses on the other corners of the section. The house, or historic, the house, primary of 30 feet, bay of 72 to the, keeping bringing houses, all staff, infant's height and scale will be comparable to the contact, several two-story houses of similar height and, here are the, in, left for beach avenue, and then a bay, one that includes a, on the back. T, garage is located at, because of the smallest lot, finds that this garage, as door facing the street, do meet the contact. Floor path, oh, sorry, well, that's the bay, that's not a setback. And here are the garage doors, reset. And here are, just context, those, well, the photo of the side side, so you can kind of see the house in relation to its neighbors.
The applicant is here, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bulldog. Applicant, please come forward, state your name, and present your case.
Tyler Marinell, architect, working with Oville on the house, and, and, initially, we would, I'm building a story on this house, and the, actually, we can, I mean, we see the stand line for the existing house, existing has, sort of it, like, the proper line, the other of the house is 5 feet from property line.
Tyler, or Ms. Marinell, interrupting. I don't think we, uh...
Do you have a comment?
Okay.
It's been a while.
Back tell from the existing house, five from the side. So, kind of a bizarre little thing for night. So, we were kind of tasked to, because we were going to build a second story on this, and we decided that it was never going to be a house that ought to be the neighborhood to be telling these pictures. It was sort of a remarkable, non-architecting house. The idea put something that looked like a sort of a horse where that mask applies to the opposite corner of that intersection, seemed like the right fit. Considering it's a short lot, we had some challenges. So, we put the garage in the basement, which worked out pretty well. We recessed it kind of in this five-foot deep hole, which works really well to kind of even mask it, to meet the setbacks that the staff had kind of asked us to hit. And then, you know, looking at the footprint, actual building footprint based on setbacks what they are, really looking for some space for porch, and that's when we asked for that ten-foot reduction in rear setback, which gives us the ability to have some type of porch toward the rear. And considering that this lot will never be big enough to have attached garage, they do the accessory structure, felt like that would be a fair ask to give us some there. I think here from the neighbors, an easement back is, we don't know, there's a bunch of legal things going on with an easement back, but if the easement does hold, it's a ten-foot unit, so we've kind of cleared that line with the porch. Those year regardless of the easement houses, kind of side of those easements and everything that staff has set up for it. The applicant is here. Joe Cullen, the owner of the property. We're glad to ask any questions. I'm not sure, Joe, you have any comments you'd like to make, but here are your questions.
Thank you. Sorry for the technical discussion.
Green light is good.
Rebooting. Standby. If you could use this mic in the meantime.
Thank you. So, do you, Commissioner, do you have any question to the applicant at the time? Sing now. I will take the comment from public. So, former councilmember Stuart Clifton, former planning commissioner and former Metro Historic Zoning Commissioner. Welcome.
Mr. You. But it's good to be here. The last of us here participating was on your side, and that was twenty-one years ago. I live on, uh, two thousand. So, thank you. I have. Yeah. All. Uh. We're getting all with six. Area. But, uh. It is. He's not. He's already. Been there already here. He's at forty-three. We think that it was. Hey. So, you know, the structure that's coming up very down. And. It's what is seventy feet for. Very good. People. Twenty-four. Third. People who want to. Away.
Sorry. Did I turn it? Okay. There's a reason why we're. And spacing is one of those, and these lots, but not just this lot, two lots, again, are small lots, and space should be a very relative for protection. It's part of what I wanted to say. It may be all of what I wanted to say, because I think from submitted to you writing, which you've had to read from, from, I think, all three of these folks. So, if there's a rationale for having setbacks at all, it seems like it would be for that nearby owners from being overly close. I mean, it's a, it's a friendly neighborhood. It seems like there needs to be a better reason for this design would work better. Design they've come up with would work better if they had tenants. Particularly, it would be getting closer to properties, unless I'm wrong, which is something that you quickly consider. That's, that's our basic. Details in a page letter, so if there are no questions, I'll just sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. Councilmember.
You. And like, I have no problem with plans. I do have concerns about what things that the neighbors do with me and Clifton. I have a question. So, the applicant, because setback issue, the applicant was required to notify nearby property or nearby or touching property owners. Is that correct? Do we know? Yes?
That is correct.
Thank you. So, and applicant shared that there are some issues with neighbors about setback issue, but I understand why that hasn't worked out and think it needs to be. And so, I would ask the applicant to defer and reach out to those and get this resolved, or ask the commission to defer and this issue be worked out, let them come back and say, hey, work this out with the neighbor, and we want to present the plan. So, thank you.
Do I? Can I speak? Is he able?
Yes, you may. Please come forward.
Friendly neighborhood aspect is great. I live in the neighborhood a few blocks away. I did try to work it out with Mr. Shukoff, and immediately got the, here's my attorney. So, now we're in that state of it. As a developer, there's carrying costs associated with paying $500,000 for a piece of property, which I've waited six months to now try to develop. Soon as, never knew about an easement. As soon as we applied, outcomes Mr. Shukoff, who I've never met and he's never been on my property, as noticed by the tenants that live in that, in that house. They've never used that driveway, which was paid for and installed, and the curb cut was applied for by the man I purchased the property from who bought it in nineteen seventy-two, I believe. The Shukoffs didn't purchase their property until seventy-eight. The lady who lives next door has alley access off of Beechwood Avenue. That lot originally, and I did have a lot of help with this story. We tried to figure out why it was so chopped up. It was originally one lot, I think it was owned in nineteen thirteen, Samson map that that source provided for me. There were two houses on the property. There were two attached garages. There was a house on the front, which was the Shukoffs', and there was a house in the back, which is the existing house off of Beechwood Avenue now, and the two garages. There were two lot line shifts between nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty, between nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-seven. One was to divide the lot in half, parallel to Oakland, which was creating two lots, one on Beechwood, one on Oakland. Then there was another lot line shift perpendicular off Oakland, creating this lot. So, this lot has only ever been a vacant lot. The easement privately recorded was between the property owner on Beechwood and the property owner on Oakland. So, and it was to access the two garages on those respective properties after the lot line shift.
Perhaps the applicant could also use that time to continue to negotiate and maybe have a resolution, but the applicant would need to agree to that deferral.
Thank you. I'm, will, for the other commissioners, do you have any opinion on?
I'm comfortable with continuing discussion today. In my opinion, we don't need to defer. The way I hear everything presented, in my mind, the easement is an issue, but not a controlling issue here. The applicant, I think, has made a good, I support the staff and the applicant in this case. Even with the easement in place, the house is not encroaching on it directly. They've still left 10 feet, considering the depth of the lot, the short depth of the lot. It's consistent with previous setback determinations we've made here, and I don't see why we would need to defer or, or give it much more additional consideration.
Very well. Commissioner Fitz?
I guess we're, we're being asked for several setback determinations, so I, you know, I guess the question of the easement, I feel like the easement is important. Who, why it's there, you know, who put it there and when. To me, that's not, I mean, I, I mean, there's no way for us to know that, and there's no way for us to know that today. I guess I'm, I'm inclined to keeping a 20-foot setback at the rear instead of reducing it to 10 feet. And whether there's an easement or not, I think just because it's a small lot, instead, you know, we're, we're reducing, there's several setback determinations asking us to reduce in different directions, and so I feel like it's going to overbuild the lot if, if we do reduce it to 10 feet. So, that's my, my just personal opinion on that, regardless of the easement's there or not. I also have a question just about the, the request for the reduction from 15 to 20 feet for the garage doors. Where on this plan is the sidewalk? Is the sidewalk what I'm seeing at the, at the, do I see the small strip of a curb and?
Yeah, the black is the, the thicker black line, my understanding is the property line, and then the kind of dotted line around it with a curve, that's the sidewalk line.
So, is the number 115 within the sidewalk, or is it?
Yes, yes.
I guess, but the, so the reduction from 20 feet to 15 feet, if that is the sidewalk, you know, most cars are, especially these days, I mean, we've got cars that are greater, longer than 15 feet. So, if you park in that drive in front of the garage, is your car going to be hanging out over the sidewalk and be protruding into the sidewalk? So, that's my concern with that request. Does that make? Make sense?
Somewhere I have the floor plan with it. There you go.
Yeah, so if you're parked in front of the garage door, which people pull up and park behind the garage door, when you're not fully parked in the garage, are you going to be overhanging the sidewalk? And so, I just have a concern with that setback determination because of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Fitz. Commissioner Mayhull?
Yeah, I drove by this property before the meeting, and I went up that alley, and I beg to disagree with you, the property owner is using that alley. There were trash cans there and recycle bins, and it's a real narrow alley. And so, I, I agree with, I agree that, that I don't see the reason for not approving, not keeping the setback as it is supposed to be. It's already very narrow, and, and I don't see why, I just don't understand why a neighbor would want to, 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 to close in another neighbor like that when they've been used to, to having access with that. I agree that, you know, I don't appear that it would be very easy to park back there, but they can. And it just seems like the one, the property owner next to you on, on Oakland Avenue is the one that predominantly uses that space, just from my eyeballing it. And so, you know, we, we do have setback determinations for a reason, and, and especially given the, the concerns of the neighbors, I, I don't understand why. I, I don't understand why, why staff is, is approving the alterations to the, to the setback rules that are already there. And so that's just my, my impression.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahal. Is there any comment? Commissioner Jones?
I do, I think Commissioner Fitz brought up a really good point that I had not considered when I was reading this proposal earlier and about that specific side setback and also just the reared setback. And while the house itself, I think, is a nice house, and in the context, I think, but on this lot, I do think it might just be too large for, with all the setback determinations necessary on three sides. The bay window, I do not have a problem with that side setback. And I see, you know, there were existing setbacks that were to the side, that encroached further, but the, the vehicle access affecting one of them and this new structure, I think, that, again, Commissioner Fitz brought up, is a good point. And with that rear setback just being so close to the other houses and just what a small lot it is, it's just, it's a small lot and therefore it needs to maybe be a smaller home on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is there any other comment or question? It was brought really a good point. I mean, especially sidewalk, you know, side setback and rear setback, those are very important decision-making point. Do you have any other comments or questions?
I have a quick question. On the rear setback, I'm looking at page 16 of the PDF, that one there. Where is, is the easement on the applicant's property or the neighbor's property? Or in between both? Or does, do we even know?
I don't know. I, I don't know where it is. I'm going to defer.
It is wholly in that 10 feet on this property.
On the applicant's property.
Which is why we, and just like any easement, whether it's sewer, electrical, anything, we're allowed to build up to that easement. Obviously, there's the setback withholding. So obviously, it's a 20-foot setback, which is dashed in there. And we're asking for that 10 feet. And that's, that's why, you know, the easement, in our mind, they will work that out with whatever legal means that are already in process. We actually already deferred this a month. Now, we were on last month's agenda as well. And who knows how long that's going to take, which is why the design stops where it does. If the easement is proven to be legal and withstanding, then, you know, you all have the ability to, to allow that screen porch to touch the easement. And if the easement is proven to not be legal and notwithstanding, then we'll be 10 feet from the property line. I don't exactly know where the house next door is, but there's some even more space beyond that. But all these setbacks were given to us from historic staff. We ask these questions and work closely with them with the garage door. As you know, you all have approved garage doors really close to sidewalks so that people can't park to them. So it's either no car or a whole car. And, and I think you've seen that sometimes there's like a five-foot setback so that if you park there on a five-foot setback, you're in the street. So you couldn't do it. So this was negotiated with staff as 15. We were, we were trying to bring the existing house out to where the existing house is or the new house, try and use some of these established setbacks that were already there. But obviously, I never thought, oh, they'll approve a three-inch setback on one side and five on the other. So we were trying to find a happy medium. You know, like we discussed before, the, the option previous was keep the existing house, build on top of it, add on to it, which would have been even more worse setbacks, a bigger house, for trying to do something good for this corner that is more respectful of everybody else in the neighborhood and respectful of what could be an easement that might hold up. We don't know, and, and I don't have a dog in that fight. But we've designed it so that no matter what happens with the easement, the house is a valid design on the easement. You can still pass by it.
And that being said, Tyler and Michael, we've worked together for a long time, and I've been in the neighborhood a long time. But we, we did stop the house at the 20-foot rear setback. We just, okay. We only, we, we've only included or attached the screened-in porch, which is kind of the most private secluded. That is an intersection. So that's kind of the most private and secluded spot for an outdoor area. It isn't heated and cooled space. It's not going to be enclosed. It's an open porch. That is the only portion of the house, and it's only one story, that is encroaching into the rear setback. That, that's, that's all we're asking for. But I think the, the issue with the garage with some more basic layout, we would be able to push that back so it is not encroaching into the side setback of 20 feet, if that is a concern. Those garage doors can be recessed, I think, easily back another five feet potentially. But if we don't tear the, if I don't tear the house down, you've got a greater setback issue that the board won't be able to rule on at all. Because right now, it's encroaching on all the setbacks. And it's, it's, this, we just thought this structure was much more thoughtful to, to the, to the four corners of Oakland and Beechwood as opposed to trying to salvage the existing one-story brick ranch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question, commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I don't know what the process is. I wanted to make a slight comment. I'm not the moving party, of course. But we seem to have reargued the case after discussion of the commission. I just wanted to point out that I'm, first of all, I meant to tell you, I was asked to tell you by Andy and Eva. They're not here only because they're taking care of grandkids in New York City and can't be back. And the other party, party on Beechwood also was out of town inadvertently. And I'm here not as their lawyer, I should have made that clear if I didn't, but as a friend who wanted to explain their position. But I'm sorry that there's not been a meeting of the minds. I think there could be. I, I thought there would be after it was deferred, but there was no contact. So anyway, I'm, I'm not here saying they want this to be killed today. I just don't think it's ready for prime time yet. But maybe that's the same thing as killing it if it has to be a new proposal. But I just want to make that clear. I'm sorry if I'm, I've ordered to do that.
Thank you. So just stay on the format. If Commissioner do not have any question to the applicant or public, I will now formally close the public hearing and we will discuss among commissioners. So Commissioner Price, do you have any further question?
No, I'll just close with the comment that I do agree with other commissioners. I didn't consider the side setback with the garage. I do agree that that's an issue with the sidewalk. So if there's room for the applicant to work with staff on moving those garage doors back, as he indicated, I would support a motion that includes that stipulation. As for the one-story porch that's within, I, I have no, I don't have a problem given the, given the parcel size and orientation with being within 10 feet of the easement. Again, I, I support the staff recommendation on, on this one. With the exception of the side setback.
Commissioner Price, you know, currently, there's this curb cut in the alley going back. If we approve this with the 10-foot setback, is that going to encroach on that alley?
I suppose it's going to come right up to it.
So the way blueprint is going, 10 feet is 10 foot from the property line. So the typical rear setback will be 20 feet. But if the porch is an open porch on the same level as first floor of the building, the special exception will be allowed to encroach up to 10 feet of rear property line. So if it's an enclosed porch, that will be totally different question. But if it's open porch on the first floor, our cause approve a special exception to encroach into up to 10 feet to the rear property line setback. So for that, that will be easement is or not. So that will be zero to easement line. So that will be to be determined among other neighbors. I hope that will be clear.
I do understand your concern, so.
But the neighbors will still be able to use that alley and have their trash back there and have cars coming back and forth with that porch being up to that alleyway? Is that what you?
If I could just jump in, my understanding is there is no alley. The easement is the back 10 feet of this property.
Well, there is currently a, an alleyway.
Which is fully on this property, from what I understand.
It's 100%. It's the driveway for the house I purchased. That's where their parking is in the back. There's a, there's a garage door in the back where the kitchen is. It's the most convenient thing. We, we have three Belmont students that live there, so.
But it does extend, the actual paved area extends all the way to the other end of the Shookoff house.
Don't know what the Shookoff's property is. That's their property. They have never used my property to access the rear of their property. I did not know, I've never met them until I applied for permit with historic.
Well, somebody uses it because their trash cans are back there.
There's hundreds of thousands of properties in Davidson County that do not have access from the rear of the property to a public right of way.
True. Is this going to be your personal residence or is this going to be rent?
I'm a developer. No, we're, I'm building for a client.
So let's stick to the formula. Public hearing closed. Any other discussion concerned, commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
I am in agreement with the last thing Commissioner Price has said. I would definitely move or want a further setback of the garage to meet that 20-foot setback as required. Again, the bay window setback is, hasn't been an issue at all for anyone, it seems. And being an un, an unenclosed, open, one-story porch, I'm also now in agreement with, with that, that setback determination in the back. So that is how I'm leaning on this one.
Commissioners?
I guess, what defines unenclosed porch? If it's screened, it's unenclosed, and if it's glassed in, it's enclosed. We look at unenclosed as what's really truly a porch. It could be screened or not screened, but it's not conditioned space. Okay.
Any other questions?
If there are no more questions, I'll make a motion. On 2415 Oakland Avenue, I move for approval of the staff recommendation with the, with conditions and with the additional condition that the applicant work with staff to move the side setback of the garage into the property to meet the base setback requirements.
Proper motion, is there a second? Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, or in favor to the motion, say aye. Three ayes? Opposed, no? Two noes. Let me ask legal question. In this set, chair should vote with majority or chair can vote as chair wish?
Chair can vote as chair wishes.
So in that case, chair vote no. So decision have to make at the next meeting. Or?
You, you either need to have a second motion that actually passes, or if there's no action, right now, there's no action, then it will pass as presented.
Yeah, it passes by operation of law if you all can't come to a decision.
Understood.
I'd like to make another motion that we defers this, this case for, we can't defer it.
That can be done with the approval of the applicant if they, if they voluntarily agree to defer. So that's a question for the applicant.
What did you say our option, other option was, Robin?
You can make another motion, not that to defer, but you can make another motion. If, if there's no motion that passes, then the project is proved as has been presented.
Okay. I'd like to make another motion. I motion, I make a motion that we approve the staff recommendations, however, that we apply the, the current setbacks of 20 feet. And is it 10 feet on the side? Or, 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 or that we, or that the applicant work with staff on moving back the, setting back the garage further? Does that?
And it might be helpful to have an exact number.
What's the current allowable setback? It's 10 feet on the side?
Yeah, it's, it's 20 feet. The base zoning would say 20 feet for the garage doors.
20 feet in the back and the front? And the side?
Yes, 20 feet for the back and the front. And then the bay should be 10 feet and it's two feet over. And then the porch should be 20 feet and it's 10 feet over.
I'm just going to make a motion that they keep the 20-foot setback in the rear and a 10-foot setback on the side.
I think.
No?
I think you mean 20 feet. The base, the base zoning, just to clarify, I don't want to direct your motion, but to clarify, the base zoning would be 20 feet for the garage doors and 20 feet from the rear.
But you have, in your staff recommendation, you have approved how much of a setback on the side?
It's, it's, let me go to the map, because it is confusing or the site plan.
While she's looking that up, I just want to clarify, we haven't approved anything.
Well, you recommended?
Yeah, our staff report is just information for you, for your decision-making.
And, and you, you recommended in that staff report?
We did.
That the side setback be, be reduced from 20 feet to what?
So it's 15 feet for the garage doors.
To 15?
Yeah, just to clarify, because it is confusing. The side setback for most of the house is 10 feet. But the garage doors, because, because of the issue with cars going in and out, garage doors facing a side street or any street have to be set back 20 feet. If that makes sense? Maybe I confused you more.
Then, then, then I make a motion to adopt the staff recommendations with the caveat that the existing setbacks of 20 feet stay in existence.
So just to clarify, the garage door portion?
Yes.
Not entire side setback, but only the garage door portion will be meet with a current setback of the 20 foot? Of 15?
The bay issue, the bay window is not a problem.
Only the garage door?
Yes.
Is the motion clear, Robin? Should we reinstate?
Let me, I'm just sorry, I was chattering. So my understanding is with the staff recommendation, except that the garage doors need to meet the 20-foot setback and the rear wall needs to meet the 20-foot setback. Is that correct? Thank you.
So that's the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Am I allowed to ask a question?
After second, we can discuss. If there's no second, motion fails. But if there's second, we can carry on the discussion.
And then we vote?
I think the chair is correct. If you, if the motion fails, then you can continue with your discussion. If there's a second, then you can continue with your discussion of that motion.
So there's no second to that motion? So this motion fails. So we keep, continue our discussion.
Would anybody else like to make a stab at a motion?
No, I didn't. Can I ask a question now?
Yes. Yes.
Now, I was just, if we ended up with a motion that's the exact opposite motion, and again, it's three to three, then just keep going?
Well, we got to determine that.
It's up to you.
Well, it won't be necessary. During the discussion, some commissioner may change the vote, which happens and could happen. So we may just discuss all the issue and come up with some decision.
I have, so Commissioner Johnson, you had, you had made a comment that, I guess, in the base zoning, you're allowed to reduce, you're allowed to reduce for an open porch from 20 feet to 10 feet.
Yes, that is correct. It's, if it's an open porch, open deck, open porch, open deck, same as first floor of the building. So second floor porch will not be allowed, but if it's an open porch or deck, it will be allowed to encroach into 10 foot of the 20 feet setback.
And to further clarify, that setback, does that apply to both easements and parcel lines equally?
That would be a legal question to our legal counsel, Mr. Dickerson.
Yeah, the problem is, we don't have a determination about what the easement is. So it's just the property line for purposes of that. But the easement would obviously extend that, I think, by operation of law.
It sounds to me like we're maybe at an impasse, given that we don't have a final saying on this easement.
But we're not asking to be in the easement. We're not touching.
Excuse me. In that case, we do not have the ability to make a motion to defer? The, we can't do that?
That's correct. You still have the ability to have further debate and make a motion that you can get four people to agree on though.
But we can't make a motion to defer?
Correct. Let me restate that. You could, but it would, the decision would be made for you because 30 days will have lapsed from the application.
So again, if, I think the, an issue for some might be that it would, if allowed as presented with the back deck, it would move up to the driveway easement thing happening in the back. If it, after that, again, neighbor legal thing happens, and yes, that is an easement, again, are we saying, or do we know, would they have to then move it off the line of that easement if it's considered to be so, or if it is still just from the property line? That's the question, I think. Might be a little more comfortable if it does end up being an easement, that they have to abide by it, they have to move it back another five feet, you know, off that, is that's, I think.
Yeah, I see what you're aiming for. The problem is, it's all established on a condition that no one controls, in the sense that there's some court determination, right? Because I'm assuming you wouldn't want to, you'd need to have something to make that determination. You could, you could attempt to make it conditional on some type of court ruling, but again, that makes it to where it really slows down the process. But it might also put some pressure on a resolution between the neighbors. I don't think, I can't say it couldn't be done, but I haven't seen that condition made. Usually easements, because they're private in nature, boards and commissions tend to stay, land use boards tend to stay away from them and simply say, you all need to work that part out. But you all are forced, because of your structure, to have to make a decision today because the applicant is not agreeing to defer, as I understand, so.
I guess my, I guess my concern is because we don't, you know, right now, this easement is all kind of hearsay, because there's nothing on the survey that we have or we can see. And so if the neighbor next door, if you're facing the front of the house, the neighbor to the right, if they do, I mean, we're hearing they don't use the driveway, but what if they do? And, I don't know, then this porch is going to be like right on the edge of their driveway. To me, it's like, if we could even just have some relief from this driveway, because if they want to keep this driveway, this porch is going to be right on the driveway. Can we, I don't know, but there's not a survey, I don't, that we have to see that, so it's just hard to determine. I was just trying to think through, maybe, is there an option where we, instead of, you know, 10 feet, could we say 12 feet? I don't know what that does to the, to the scale of the porch and layout of things, but is there a way to just give it a little bit of relief from the easement or the driveway?
I understand that. I understand all these concerns. I just wonder if maybe we're ahead of ourselves and our mission is to decide whether or not this project complies with the design guidelines and our purview when it comes to setback. Considering we don't have this easement information, and it sounds like to me, it's more of an informal historical use, and that's really outside of our ability to judge. And again, to me, this meets the design guidelines. 10 feet setback from the parcel line is not some, it's not something we've never approved before. And informal historical use of an easement that we don't have any official legal information about isn't something that we probably should get into in an ad hoc manner.
Any other question? So just sake of the question to the legal and administrator. So as a commissioner, we do have authority to determine setback variance. So typically, a setback is, rear setback in residential zoning is 20 feet. And there are some exceptions, such as open deck can encroach up to 10 feet. So, but as a commission, do we have authority to, not 10 foot, but based on the condition or very interesting parcel, so maybe we will grant additional setback instead of 10, such as 12, 13, 14, 15. Would that be within commissioners' purview?
Yes, because what you're doing is determining what the setback should be. So it's not a variance. You're not changing the bulk standards. Although we often look at those as a place to start and, you know, take that into consideration if it's less than what's normally approved. But really, you have the ability to decide what the setback should be for every single property. So you can make them whatever you want them to be. The bulk standards are just a guide for you.
Thank you. Hopefully, that clarification will help some commissioners' understanding of the setback. Is there any further question?
I guess, as I've kind of let the bulk standards determination for an open, I guess, unconditioned porch sink in, that that can be, you know, to our discretion, to be reduced to 10 feet, I'm kind of coming back around to Commissioner Price's initial motion, myself.
Oh, I mean, again, I was on it, and if it, again, makes it more comfortable for just a four-person positive vote, or either way, I mean, again, you know, since we're setting it, if we do want just that driveway stands, if we don't think it's appropriate that it sits right on that driveway, perhaps, and that we just think it's too much, you know, 12 feet from the rear property line, because it, you know, 20, and then I would vote for that.
I think that's a good, and it gives more space for the current, the property owner behind. You know, I'm dissuaded by, you know, the aerial views, the aerial map of this. It's just, it is an odd property. But, you know, and you can see how deep, you know, the house would be compared to what's on this aerial map. And I'm just, I guess, seeing as the front setback will still match, and that is taking up a lot of the lot, I just, again, don't think, it's, I just think it's still a nice properties. But I think having the 12 feet is a, is a good, just minimum, middle ground there. So in that regard, for 2415 Oakland Avenue, I move for approval of this infill project with all staff recommendations and the additional recommendation for the rear setback to be set at 12 feet and the side garage entry portion of the side setback be set at 20 feet.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fitz seconds. Any further discussion on that motion?
Can you just clarify that the 12 feet in your motion is for the porch, not the house?
Yes. In my motion, the 12-foot setback is specifically and only for the porch as designed, open air, you know, screened in, but non-conditioned, one-story porch face.
Is the motion clear, Robin? Okay. So I think everybody's clear on the motion and seconded. Any other question, clarification? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. I think now we are going into other business. So today's public hearing concludes now. Thank you. So other business, would that be, Robin?
Yes. Sorry, Metro Legal has ethics training for us. Would you mind pulling it up, please?
It.